Adequate notice for this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place for the meeting. Please rise for the party to leave.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First up on the caucus agenda is a proclamation for Constitution Week. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties and bodies and principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to the rule by law. Whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty-three marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-sixth anniversary of framing the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And where it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorial anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which we all commemorate. And whereas the public law guarantees issues of proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Whereas we recognize Captain Joshua Huddy, chapter of the Daughters of American Revolution, along with the Ocean County Historical Society in celebrating Constitution Week in Ocean County. Now therefore be resolved that I, Timothy McDonald, Mayor of the Lacy Township, do hereby recognize September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guarding of our liberties.
We forward that to the county. The county had asked us to take care of that. Commissioner Haynes is part of the revolution, the women of, you know, the revolution.
Next up is the Lacy Elks donation to the food bank.
Mr. Bard?
Hello. My name is Bill Cansey. I'm a past district deputy from the Lacy Elks. And with me tonight is Rich Bard, who is a past state president of the New Jersey State Elks Association and past Grand Lodge Committee man. We're here tonight to make a donation to the Lacy Food Bank in the amount of two thousand dollars, and I hope this can serve you well.
Sure.
Why not? Get over here, Pete. Get closer.
It's gonna help a lot of people in our township here. I'm Harold Peters, co-chairman of Lacy Food Bank, almost twenty years now. But if I may, make some accolades for our.
Sure.
Of course.
I'd like to thank the Elks first. The Elks, the Moose, the Rotary, the churches here in Lacy, all the schools in Lacy. The Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, the small businesses, the big box businesses. The small business for allowing us to place our little blue barrels in there for food collection. There's so many people to thank, but on behalf of our sixty-two volunteers, our director, Joanne Kirch, and our co-director Donna McAvoy. We'd like to say thank you so much for, I gotta ask you, is this from one committee or is this all committees?
Both National Foundation.
National Foundation. Wow. It's gonna help so many people. I don't have this month's count, but last month, August, we had three-hundred-and-thirty kids and adults. It's hard to believe we have that many people here in Lacy that needs help, and we're glad we can do it. We had three-hundred-and-thirty kids and adults and forty-three bus deliveries of people who can't come in, so. But again, I'd like to thank you and the whole township. What a great village this is. Thank you so much.
Yeah, real quick, it has nothing to do with the donation we just made, but I think it's worth saying, over the weekend, as you know, we had our annual Army of Hope picnic. And the Army of Hope raised funds for Gold Star families and for seriously wounded soldiers. And donations were made from across the state, but as of last night, we had one-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars donated on that day. One-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars.
Is that the biggest one you've ever had or no?
It's not the most money ever raised, but it's the most money ever raised for the Army of Hope because we used to have a homeless veterans function in conjunction with it. But it's the most money that's ever been raised for the Army of Hope.
Thank you.
Number three, special use permit, pop-up tent sale for lavender blue, September fifteenth through September seventeenth.
Lavender Blue is looking to host a pop-up tent sale, the fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth, from ten a.m. to six p.m. And it will take place in the grass field area of the site at forty-four Manchester.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number four, request to post signage, Lacy Historical Society Halloween night at the museum.
The Lacy Historical Society is hosting a Halloween night at the museum event, and the event is on October sixth and seventh. They are asking to post long signs around town starting two weeks prior, which would be the twenty-second of September.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ocean Wind requests to work outside, pardon, work outside in noise ordinance.
Ocean Wind, as you know, are is planning on starting their cabling project in October. There are parts of the project that will require twenty-four-hour operation, a one- or two-day event. Obviously, you know, the noise ordinance doesn't allow that without permission from the governing body. If there is de-watering that needs to be done in some spots and they don't believe that that's going to happen at this time because it's been very dry. That would be twenty-four-hour operation for at least a week at a time. They will be notifying all residents or all property owners, I should say, within two-hundred feet of the area. So it's a very big area because you figure it's a three-hundred-acre track that the cable is coming across. So and then once they get to Route Nine, they'll cross under Route Nine, under the Barnegat Branch Trail, and into their site where they're building their substation. So they just need permission from the governing body to work, you know, those hours that needed outside the scope of the noise ordinance.
Is that motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Excuse me. Call-up discussion on a no-knock ordinance.
All right, as you know, we've talked about this several times, and just last night at eight o'clock, residents were getting people knocking on their doors. And it's already dark by that point with regards to solar sales. So here we are, I've looked at a few towns, Amy and I have looked at a few towns of different ordinances. We've come up with a sample no-knock ordinance. It's pretty much what Ocean Township Ware Town does. And basically, if you want to be on a no-knock ordinance, a no-knock list, you would submit a form to the municipal clerk's office. They would then gather that form, and twice a year you send it over to the police department. We could possibly probably send it over more like monthly to the police department as people add themselves to the no-knock list. Names would have to be redacted from that list. We'd only be allowed to put addresses on the list because of Daniel's Law. But those people would then be on the list, but in addition to that, the residents that wish to be on the list would get a sticker for their window, door. I'm trying to get magnetic ones, trying to price that out, and of course, you know, there would be a fee for that sticker to, you know, pay for the cost of that. But this is the ordinance that I am looking at at this time. I did talk to Ware Town. She says they really don't maintain the list anymore, and I was a little shocked, but they raised their peddling and soliciting fees to a thousand dollars.
It's a way to keep them out.
To keep them out.
Way to keep them out.
So I don't know if that's legal to do, but Barnegat just did it as well. But that also keeps like Tom and Dee from soliciting and Mr. Softy, so I don't wanna.
Cut them off.
Keep them out, so I don't know if there's a way for us to do scaling in our ordinance to do that. You know, so I mean, but I do want to go forward with a no-knock. It does not stop political parties, it does not stop religious organizations, and it does not stop nonprofit groups from going door to door. It only stops the businesses.
Let me ask our counselor, could we do something along the lines of businesses that are in town versus outside because it seems that we can make different?
I would have to say with the top of my head, without further legal research, that the answer to that would be no.
Okay.
Because I think it'd be a violation of constitutional dormant commerce.
Okay.
So when you raise the fee to keep other competitors out out of the jurisdiction, then you have commerce clause issue.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'd like to like look on drafting the no-knock ordinance, but at the same time, I'd like to look at maybe addressing our peddling and soliciting to see if we could section out maybe those mobile units. So they're not paying the thousand dollars and those, you know, ones that walk door to door to make the price a little different, to keep them out.
Yeah, I would recommend the committee say, you know, continue to research this and develop it, and we've got plenty of time, so maybe the next meeting we'll have a little bit more. That would be my recommendations.
Get it done by the next meeting. Nobody likes the doors.
I don't think we have to get it done, but we need some more information and stuff.
People don't like it.
You know, get some more information for us. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, here we go, right into the meeting. Pardon me. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to the public laws in nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise for a salute for the flag and a moment of silence.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-three, authorizing the conveyance of an easement identified as block one-seven-zero-one, lot one.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the conveyance of an easement of an unimproved right-of-way of the Township of Lacy to the County of Ocean for an intersection upgrade and traffic signal project on Manchester Avenue at Western Boulevard. This is block seventeen-on-one, lot one.
Move it.
Sir?
Is that why Tom just snuck his head out?
What?
The gentleman in the back says he can't hear from the microphone, so is there?
Oh, I don't know. I was actually just coming out to move your mic over to you because your mic hasn't pointed towards you.
Thank you.
All right.
Because you have like a bad location.
Thanks, huh? Let's repeat that from Mr. Smith.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the conveyance of an easement of an unimproved right-of-way of the Township of Lacy to the County of Ocean for an intersection upgrade and traffic signal project on Manchester Avenue at Western Boulevard.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. First reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-four, authorizing the conveyance of an easement identified as block one-seven-two-two, lot seventy-one and seventy-two.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the conveyance of an easement on an unimproved right-of-way of the Township of Lacy to the County of Ocean for an intersection upgrade and traffic signal project on Manchester Avenue at Haynes Street.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes, first reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-five, establishing chapter two-seventy-five of the Township Code entitled privately-owned salt storage.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, establishing chapter two-seventy-five of the Township Code of the Township of Lacy entitled privately-owned salt storage so as to regulate the storage of salt and other de-icing materials from being exposed to stormwater.
This is all part of the stormwater master plan updates. So such, if you had a private landscaping business, you keep a pile of salt on the side for the winter. You now have to have it properly encased and covered. Just like you see some of our plazas, Shoprite, Walmart, they also have a pile of salt. It has to be properly contained now so the runoff doesn't go in to the water. So there will be violations and penalties if these businesses and landscapers violate that, and it's all part of stormwater management.
Move it.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes, second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-one, amending chapter three-thirty-five to prohibit above-ground electric fences.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter three-thirty-five, section twenty-two, entitled fences and screens to prohibit above-ground electric fences in residential areas.
Second reading.
Second. Comment from the public?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
I need a second to close.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Okay. Second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-two, amending chapter three-twenty-three to provide an additional stop and yield intersection.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter three-twenty-three of the Township Code entitled vehicles and traffic so as to amend section three-twenty-three dash twenty-eight entitled Schedule V, stop and yield intersections. So as to provide for additional stop and yield intersections in the Township of Lacy. This is for Frog Hollow Road and Throff Road.
Yes, this is the second reading. We'll open this up to the public. Does the public have any comment on this?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash two-sixty-two, awarding a contract for the purchase of sand, gravel, and stone and screened topsoil.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of sand, gravel, sand, gravel, stone, and screened topsoil. We had our bid opening, and this is all going to Brickwall. I will read through the items and their price per ton. So for the fill, it is eleven dollars per ton. For concrete sand, it is thirteen dollars per ton. Block sand, thirteen dollars per ton. Road gravel, fourteen dollars per ton. Three-eighths washed stone, forty dollars per ton. Sand grit, seventeen dollars per ton. Three-sixteenths washed gravel, there was no bid. Three-eighths crushed stone, forty-three dollars per ton. Five-eighths washed gravel, forty dollars per ton. Mason sand, thirteen dollars per ton. Three-quarters broken stone, forty-three dollars per ton. One-and-a-half-inch broken stone, forty-six dollars per ton. Our blend aggregate, which is the road base, is thirteen dollars per ton. Two-and-a-half broken stone is forty-six dollars per ton. Three-fourths washed stone is forty-two dollars, forty-two dollars per ton. And three-inch, six-twelve core stone is forty-nine dollars per ton, and screened topsoil is twenty-three dollars per ton.
Motion? Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash two-sixty-three, awarding contracts for the purchase of bulk binamess material.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding contracts for the purchase of bulk binamess material. This one is, this bid is also going to Brickwall as our primary vendor and Earl as our secondary vendor in case Brickwall does not have the items available at the time that we need them. For the eighty-four dollars per ton for concrete-type F A B C mix I five, eighty-two dollars per ton for mix I two, and ninety-four dollars per ton for F A B C quarter-end mix.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash two-sixty-four, authorizing the placement of a lien on block one-oh-one-point-one-two, lot twenty-one.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning the costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at nine-oh-nine Sarasota Drive and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs. This lien is in the amount of a hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and ninety-four cents.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash two-sixty-five, authorizing the refund of a tax overpayment.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to refund a tax overpayment. This is for Covered Bridge, and this is block three-fourteen, lot twenty-two-point-oh-one.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash two-sixty-six, authorizing the refund of a building department fee.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of a building department fee issued by the Lacy Township Building Department. This is because the resident decided to not move forward with the project.
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash two-sixty-seven, canceling taxes due to a disabled veteran exemption.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel twenty-twenty-three taxes due on a property granted the one-hundred-percent disabled veteran exemption and refund the resulting credit balance. This is for the property located at block seven-ninety-one-point-twenty-six, lot six.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash two-sixty-eight, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash two-sixty-nine, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills. This is in the amount of eleven million, seven-hundred, ten thousand, nine-hundred, ninety-four dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes, monthly reports.
That would be me. For the month of July, the municipal court office collected receipts in the amount of thirteen thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and one cent. Municipal clerk's office for the month of August was in the amount of twelve thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and ten cents. Road opening permits for the month of August was in the amount of three thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. Recycling commodity collected in the amount of one thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars, and truck parking in the amount of four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Department of Community Development for the month of August collected receipts in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars. Motion to accept the reports as read.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have some add-ons, do we not?
We can do them after you finish the rest of the agenda.
We'll do it in a minute.
Okay. Motion to approve township meeting minutes from August tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes from August tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Motion to approve cau-
How do you get a copy of those?
They're posted on our website. The township and the caucus are posted on our website. What?
No hard copy here.
You can pay, not here at the meeting, no. They're posted on our website. Once they're approved, they're posted.
You said you can get a hard copy, but we pay for it?
If you come and get copies from the town, you have to pay five cents per page or seven cents for legal. Okay, well, that's fine. I'm just letting you know, aware of it.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes from August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Move it. Second.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes, motion to approve raffle licenses for a Fork River Fire Company, Lacy Elks, Rotary Club of Fork River, Horizons at Barnegat, Women's Club.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes, motion to approve membership in the Fork River Fire Company for Gary Simone.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes, motion to approve junior fighter membership in the Lenoa Harbor Fire Company for Andrew McLloyd and Joseph Admission.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. And we have the add-ons.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash two-seventy-one, resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of eight Dell Latitude Computers to Dell Technologies for the Lacy Township Police Department. This will be, the total amount is twenty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash two-seventy-two, resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to wireless communications and electronics for the purchase of e-ticket printers and readers for the new police vehicles.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash two-seventy, two-seventy-three, resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to stalker radar in care, in care of Applied Concepts Incorporated for a DSR-one antenna radar system.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Last one. Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash two-seventy-four, resolution of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, accepting the resignation of various employees. We are accepting the resignation of one employee.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Comments from the committee. Deputy Mayor Kennis?
Thank you, Mayor. On Friday, I attended the nine-eleven remembrance hosted by the Elks. As evidenced here tonight, the Elks does so much for our community, and they're just a really important civic organization, and they just do a lot for the township, and we're happy that they're that, you know, so active for the town. Couple of business items in town. As Veronica mentioned, Orsted has gotten their, we had a pre-construction meeting with them, so they're gonna be commencing their, their, the building that they're able to do in Lacy. So they got approvals approx, a while ago, and they are going to be building the substation out on the power plant site along with trenching their line in from the, from the bay to the substation. That's irregardless of what happens with the windmills. These are for their approvals that they received for Lacy Township. We also had a meeting this week with the engineers for the Bamber Lake Dam. We're beginning the process of doing the engineering for that to, in order to replace the spillway at the Bamber Lake Dam. In addition, we also were putting a timetable together to, the engineering is mostly complete, I think mostly complete, for the railroad right-of-way extension. That's where the light is at, where the railroad comes out. We're gonna be doing the south side, the south side of the railroad avenue. And I did, from last month's meeting, the historical side was here and asked us to take a, have an inspection of the Schoolhouse Museum. But I'm gonna save those comments. Something has to be done at the Schoolhouse Museum. They asked us to sort of go take a look to see what we could do to keep it up or keep it maintained. So I'll have more comments in the following meeting. Those are my comments for tonight.
Committeewoman Juliana?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry that I wasn't able to make the Elks memorial service. I had some family obligation to take care of. But I don't want to reminisce and not remember that we suffered a great loss twenty-two years ago, and we should all take that into consideration. I heard a poem the other day about how we were such a tight community when that happened, and it brought us all together. It's a shame that that has been lost on, on all of us, actually. You know, it's a sad situation. But on the other side of that, we as a town are, we're very good to each other in the ways of that count, which is volunteerism. We're a town that's just full of volunteers, and we could not do it in this town without volunteers. Speaking of which, we just had our five K race here, ran by our municipal alliance. And in, from this town, pretty much alone, everyone, we raised over nineteen thousand dollars for that five K. And it's just amazing the amount of people that come out to support everything that goes on in, in our town. Thank God they do. Also, on another note, I spoke to Ray, who takes care of our Lacy EMS, and without giving out too much information, just that two of our EMS workers saved a life this week, and I personally was in touch with both of them just to tell them how wonderful, grateful, thankful that they were able to do that. These are things that we're just, you know, we're just so lucky here, and sometimes I don't think we appreciate it, but thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Committee Chairman Cortez.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to remember nine-eleven and be a little, little bit terse with my comments. The people that we lost that day weren't, we didn't lose anybody. They were murdered by murderers. So it's important to, to say that, and it's important to remember it the right way. So if you're a freshman in college right now, you were born in oh-five. If you're a senior, you were born in oh-two. So that means you got an entire K through twelve that wasn't even alive here with us on that day. So they say the winners write the history. Well, it depends on how you tell the story. So I just implore everyone to tell it the right way, the way it happened. There's no really politically correct way to tell it. People came on our soil, murdered our neighbors, nineteen of them were from Ocean County. And most unfortunate, so I hope it's remembered, and I hope that people tell the story, especially some of our veterans here that fought for our freedom. In that line of public health and public safety, I was at the opiate overdose awareness remembrance day. Every town in this great nation of ours has suffered loss, unfortunately, to opiate overdose and other types of overdose. So I want to commend our command staff and the police department that was there because they play so many roles. I had a small speaking role there, but I tried to defer to Chief Kenny. I had a small speaking role there, but I tried to defer to Chief Kenny. And, you know, what they're doing now in police nowadays, not just enforcement, I mean, they're doing education, prevention, breaking up domestics. These men and women work really hard, they should be recognized and I know everybody up here has their back. Small update from our, as liaison to recreation, James has provided the following. Whippet, the above water water park took in one hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars. Forty-three thousand, seven hundred eighteen of that was from group sales. Four hundred and thirty-six kids enjoyed summer camp this year in what amounted to probably not more than seven, seven dollars, eight dollars an hour. He's done wonderful jobs as have our volunteers and our employees and part-time counselors. Pickleball up again, very popular with our seniors and now starting to be with some of the younger folks. Lacey Day, Saturday, September thirtieth, twelve to four. Food, trucks, music, games, throw, axe throwing and much more. Better tell a Jiff about the axe throwing. Bountiful Trail, Friday, October thirteenth and Saturday, October fourteenth at six-thirty PM. We're anticipating anywhere from fifteen hundred to two thousand people. That was the mind spring of our rec department and it happened during COVID so that kids could enjoy some Halloween stuff at no cost while driving through. So to be observant of, of COVID and things like that. So that's important. I want to finish up my, my comments by saying with the mayor, yesterday, we're at Ocean County Mayor's Association meeting. RWJ Barnabas presented, they're a fine organization and they're making it so that we don't really have to travel to Philadelphia, New York. I would say research them. They, they provide, they presented over here during COVID quarterly and kept us updated. They've presented in our senior, our, our senior facility in Seabreeze and they're always welcome. For those of you on a personal note, and this is the people's seat, but I will have something personal tonight. My mother passed away and I want to thank everyone that donated to the Alzheimer's Association of Corn Park Zoo. This Italian woman, she loved to cook, she loved animals. She, 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 she raised me, single mom, so raised all of, all four of us. Not the four of us, meaning you, my siblings. I love you guys too and ladies. But thank you, I want to thank everybody on a, from our family. Thank you so much. Been here since nineteen ninety-eight and the community's welcomed us with open arms and I, I love every, every one of yous as well. My mom would have loved all of you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Couple of things here. I did attend the five K over at Gilly Park. Got to give out, I don't know, sixty, sixty trophies. It's an impressive event. And just so that you know, there was a gentleman who was ninety-two years old who ran the five K. And former committee woman, and we all know who she is, she's a beloved person in this town, is Helen Delacruz. She's in her eighties, I won't say how old, you never tell a woman's age. She ran it and she did a great job. It's just a wonderful, wonderful event. And our Lacey Township High School Cross Country for the, I want to say the thirteenth, I could be wrong, thirteenth straight year, entered as a team and won it again. So some good things there. Before I headed out to Colorado on Tuesday, we had the forest fire. And I was with Mayor Amato at the first briefing over in Berkeley Township. And from then on, I was getting updates from Captain Sullivan and then Chief Kenny took over and I was getting updates from that. I want to commend all our guys. I talked to all the chiefs on Tuesday from Denver when I landed because I'm sure those guys were exhausted, they were out there a long time. All our guys were safe and did an excellent job, so I want to commend them on that. And I did attend the Ocean County Mayor's Breakfast with Committeewoman Curatolo and I think he's the chief executive officer up at the community, Pat Ahern. I'm going to try to get him down here and just kind of do his briefing of what he did. I don't want doctors down here or anything else like that because I think you're going to be surprised at what Ocean County Community has done. As an example, they have equipment in there that they're doing that hospitals from New York City, Manhattan, are sending patients down to community for back. And where they were ranked, what were they ranked, fifth or sixth in the country for rehab or something? Yeah, they were ra, they were rated the top ten in the nation in rehab. So the old part, and Pat made a great statement. He said, when he first came down here a few years ago, the first question he asked himself he goes, would I send my family to community? And he kind of, you know, ah, ah. And he's, and he just had open heart surgery back in the spring?
Yeah, three months ago.
Three, four months ago. And guess where he had the open heart surgery? At community. So when your own people talk about that. They have a residency program and next year will be the first graduating class of the residency program. So the medicine and, and the treatment that you can get in Ocean County is going to go up. I'm going to see if I can't get him in here for October. I did talk to him, he said he'd come down and, and talk about that. The dam out Bamber, this has been something that's been on the agenda for years and absolutely needs to be replaced and we're working on that. Okay. On, on August twenty-fourth, we had an executive meeting. This meeting was noticed in accordance with all the state regulations. The first part of the meeting was a caucus meeting to pay some bills and join a co-op to purchase police cars. We then went into executive session. In executive session, we can discuss personnel, real estate and contracts. During this executive session, we met with Johnson Controls to discuss their concept of a new town complex. The complex would include a new town hall along with new police headquarters and an indoor recreation center. Due to the sunshine laws, this was the first time the entire township committee met with Johnson Controls. All five of us were there. We also had our counselor there. We had our CFO there, Veronica was there. We had Jim Wylen, our recreation director was there. Our auditor was there. Is, am I missing anybody? Oh, Rob Kraska was there?
Casey Parker.
And Casey Parker was there. During this meeting, meeting, many issues were discussed. Some issues, we were satisfied with the answers and some issues, we weren't satisfied with the answers. Since we are the first municipality in the state to go through the P-three project, some issues we need guidance on from the state. We understand that this decision of whether we go forward or not with this project is taking a long time. We said from the beginning that we wanted all the facts in front of us before this, before a decision we made and that's exactly what we're going to do. The earliest we will be able to make a decision whether we go forward or not is at least six months away and probably closer to a year. That's, the only agreement that was made that night, let me be clear on this, the only agreement that was made that night that we would continue to talk, that was it. No paperwork was signed, no contracts were signed, no checks were exchanged, nothing. We have not made a decision yet and we will be six months away before we make that decision. That's all I have. Comments from the public? Let's go with, uh, Bart, yeah.
Name for the record, please. Bernie Snyder, Oakfield. Last time we met, you said you were going to get back to us when we met with Veronica and you in the back.
Mm-hmm.
Never got back to us.
We have continued to work to try to find you a spot and I'm going to turn this over to Committeewoman Giuliano because she's kind of taking the bull by the horns.
We have, I have taken both construction people out with me and stuff and we are-
Can we, can we ask what you're in reference to?
This is in reference to VetWorks.
In, in, in reference to the VetWorks building, okay? We have a place we're going to move you to. I can't tell you the name right now because we're working on things to get things together, but I'm saying to you in public that we are going to take care of you. We're moving you into another building. It's going to be taken care of.
Can I just get a location?
It's right here in town, right? And, and, and literally, literally a block away from Route Nine because I know you're concerned about people coming on a bus and stuff like that. It's literally a block away from Route Nine.
At this point-
Once I get it clarified, within the next ten days, I will be in touch with you, Bernie, and I'll give you all the information you need to know.
All right. Because I had a proposal from Gary Quinn on Shepherd's old property there on the corner of the rail next to-
Well, that was bought with Ocean County preservation money, so I don't think they can build anything there because it was bought with land trust funds.
What he told me was that they had plans to put like bathhouses there, bathrooms there and they thought that'd be a bad idea because of the school and they were going to move it farther up the-
And you have to cross the street to use it from the rail trail.
Right. But he said he, he was almost positive that he'd be able to negotiate with, belongs to Recreation, I believe he said.
Yeah, it was bought with open space money?
With, with them and that if the town would agree to work into a deal, he could get it leased to the town for a dollar a year.
But it's vacant land. It's vacant land.
Well, he's telling me it isn't. He said he'd be able to use it. It's county property.
He'd have to do something with open space to figure out if it could be built?
Yeah.
If something could be built on it because it was built, bought with open space money.
Could you, shh, when we're, someone's speaking up here, could we have no conversation going on over here, please? Thank you, I appreciate that.
But when I'm speaking, I'm, I'm sure that something can be worked out if we wanted to work it out.
All right, Bernie, let me, let me do this. Gary just got back from Aruba. I happen to know that because he called me while I was in Colorado.
Gary.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yeah.
Let me call him tomorrow and find out exactly what, what he's talking about here. And then, and then I'll call you. I have your number and we'll go from there. But in the meantime, Committeewoman Giuliano, I, I think you should listen to what she's saying.
I'm going to listen, I'm all ears.
And, and I think you're going to be happy with what we're planning.
We've all tried to work on this.
We, we really have.
We really have.
Yeah, but nobody's telling us what's going on, so it's kind of-
Well, it takes time.
Wait, 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 I just want to go back one step. Bernie, I've known you for years and you know my husband was one of your biggest supporters and I, I just have to speak the truth here.
He, he was the biggest.
Right. I'm saying to you that you've spread the word that we're just kicking you out on the road. I've been talking to you for close to a year in reference to the fact that we were going to sell the property and we have to start looking for a place for you. And I told you that if in fact we ever do, which is not done, if we ever do build, you have a home with us forever, is what I told you, okay? And, and I, let me just finish. I'm hurt by the fact that you have ripped us apart, I mean literally ripped us apart. Thirty-two years, this town has taken care of everybody there, okay?
And taken good care of.
Yes, and that's what hurts us to think that you-
And at the last meeting, the last meeting when I asked the mayor, where are we going? He says, I don't know.
But we didn't know at that time, in fairness to him.
You gotta, you gotta tell somebody, you know, this secret of-
No, it's not a secret, it's not a secret. I'm out there trying to find-
Why won't you even tell me now where you're going to go?
Because, because I haven't made complete commitments to the other people.
Somebody can tell me if it falls through.
Absolutely not.
No, no, I, I want to know that I have it in hand and once I have it-
We work in secrecy.
It's not a secret. We're not, I, I don't understand that whole mentality of everybody thinks it's a secret.
Well, you should sit out here and look at what's going on.
What's going on?
Why won't you, wait, wait, you know, we're getting into argument, I don't want to get into an argument. I'm trying to work something out here.
I'm trying to say to you, we're trying to-
Bernie, we have to, we have to-
You know, I'm getting criticized for what I put out on, on the, the webpage and I'm sure you monitor it and that.
No, people, I don't monitor it because I don't want to get myself upset more than I already am. People come to me and say they're, you know, what, what's being said.
And people come, you wouldn't believe, and you can, my wife's back there, you can ask her, the last two weeks, I don't think I put the phone down, with people condemning the committee for what they're doing.
And I've got the other side of it as everybody's saying what's going on.
And they're condemning, they're condemning, it's almost split fifty-fifty. Well, I wouldn't say fif, fifty and a hundred. Half of them are up in arms over what's going to happen to the Warden House. And the other half, plus that half, it's a hundred percent, are concerned of what you're doing to the veterans in town.
Bernie, I've been your liaison for ten years. We all have had a good relationship. You know, you, you throw, you throw in a few barbs online when I've always just been able to pick up the phone with you, Mayor Peggy Sue longer than me, but the, the thing is-
Pete, I-
We've spent, we, this, this township has spent over six hundred thousand dollars since the eighties housing vet work. I don't see other municipalities doing it.
Six hundred thousand?
It's the other, at-
How do you get six hundred thousand?
A little over thirty-five years. You do it at, at an average of what?
What do you charge it, what do you charge it for?
Eight hundred to two thousand a month, what would rent be?
Oh, you're charging us rent then?
What would the building be? What would the?
I know you don't, but are you adding, are you adding rent into that figure?
No, we're trying to say that-
Yes, what would it be?
That no other town does this and we don't want it to stop. We're not, listen, let's not get lost here. We don't want this to stop. We want to help and we want, excuse me?
I said, where do you get the figure from? For six hundred thousand?
We're, we're speaking about what it would cost if a town-
Where do you get it? Was it from documents or from the page?
Excuse me, I'm, I'm talking to Bernie right now. I'm, I want you to know that we are doing everything we possibly can do.
It's, it's a shame that I had to put that out there like that.
Well, I, I, you know-
But, but it seems like it's getting some kind of progress finally.
Of course it is and-
We're not getting thrown out according to you now. We're not going to, veteran isn't going to walk up the-
We never were throwing you out though. We, we told you.
The last time, please, the last time we were here, he told us, you got to go find a place.
No, that's not what we said. That's not what we said.
And, and he wasn't giving us any, Veronica named what, six places? And you were going to give us a call? We never got a call from Veronica. He told me to go see Helen. You were going to give me, he gave me the phone number, it was the wrong phone number. I got the right phone number, you were going to call me back and give me the right phone number. Neither of you, I've heard from since that meeting.
Bernie, I didn't have any luck with any of the stuff, so there was nothing.
Yeah, at least you could have called. You could have called and said, hey, there's nothing out here. You know, it wouldn't hurt, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't fall on the ground and start kicking and moaning and crying.
I think at the meeting, following that last meeting we had, township committee meeting in August, I think it was on a Monday, we did tell you that it was, it was very scarce out there. You guys were talking about going down into Ware Town, the, the rent was too high and everything else like that. And you were told by Commissioner Quinn that the county in twenty-four was going to increase what they gave you to help offset any rent you would be, you were going to have to pay. Because I got that directly from Commissioner Quinn.
Yeah.
Now, a couple, well, I'm not done yet. A couple other things. The last meeting, you said we were charged, that, that the Methodist Church was charging you a hundred and fifty dollars a night. Absolutely false. You were paying a hundred dollars a night at Lacy Inn to house your vets. The Methodist Church is accepting a fifty dollar a night donation. How do I know that? Because I brokered the deal. I went to the town and made it happen. So, don't sit there and tell us we're throwing you out. I went down there and, and sat down with your executive director, and said, we're selling this because the gentleman who purchased that property wanted to move very quickly. And I said to you, it's not, you need to be prepared to move by October first. I didn't say it was definite, but be prepared. Do whatever you gotta do, get the papers together, whatever you gotta do. And I told him, we will continue to work. Veronica and I have been looking for a place for over four years to house you. We got lucky because Committeewoman Giuliano found a spot that, quite frankly, Veronica and I didn't even think of. So, we're doing everything possible. And your comments and so forth like that, the comments that you made at the last meeting are unacceptable, and I can tell you this, I talked to the commissioners.
It's my First Amendment right.
Okay, no, I'm not saying you can't say it, but I don't have to accept. I talked to the commissioners in the county about it. They're not happy with the way you're behaving. So, so that's the bottom.
You know, I really don't.
Wait a minute, hold on.
No, you, no, you wait.
No, no.
You're addressing me.
You get, you get, you get a lot of your money from the county, do you not?
We get a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
And that pays for the employees, insurance, transportation, gas?
Yep.
We have nothing left. When we first started, it was two hundred and twenty-five, and we, it was just making it. They cut it back. Then they took it away from us for three years for some unknown reason, which when I found out what the reason was, and I went to a local, an attorney, and he called up a local commissioner, the next day the commissioner called me and told me we're giving you the grant back. I said, boy, isn't that something? You dig up some dirt and all of a sudden it, you get it back. You know?
Okay.
I mean, I've been playing the game like this with politics since I was Veronica forty-three years.
You wanna call it a game? I don't take it as a game.
Well, I take it as a game because it goes back and forth, instead of just coming out and saying, tell us what you gotta tell us. There's no big secret going on. I don't see what it is.
It's not a secret. I have to work the deal out with the other people. So, until I get that all finalized, I can't say to you.
Then.
I will call you tomorrow. I will call you tomorrow.
When this deal is worked out, are we gonna be responsible for rent and everything?
No.
No.
We don't have any money for rent and bills.
There's no, there's no responsibility.
Is there upkeep, maintenance, anything like that we gotta do?
We haven't charged you for that in thirty-five years, we're not gonna start that now.
It's gonna be the same deal that you had.
Same deal that you had.
Exactly the same. Just give us some time to get it, to put the whole deal together. That's all we're asking, Bernie.
For another couple of days.
And you have till January first, at, at the earliest, if, if this gentleman comes through, at the earliest.
We're not gonna be closing until sometime next year.
Yes, so you've got plenty of time.
I know, I've, who was it? The George Boarder?
Yes, Michael DeGeorge.
Yep.
You know, I found out, I think I asked here last time, and I think Veronica said somebody from Ocean Gate, and Mr. Kenner said somebody from Bricktown.
Mm-hmm.
I was taking my daughter, granddaughter rather, she's running in a marathon to raise money, and she's running a Marine Corps Marathon to raise money for the veterans, and she was looking for sponsorships. And I stopped in a local business, and one of the, the guy, the owner said, oh yeah, you know, he's reading the sheet, he says, oh yeah, that's my cousin bought that. He says, he doesn't know what's going on down here.
I meet with Mr. DeGeorge once a week. So, he's getting ready to make application to the planning board for, to perfect the site of what he's looking to do.
And everybody else should talk to, even Gary Quinn said, it's gonna be at least two years.
To what?
By the time CAFRA permits and everything for him to build some.
Right, and it's a very good possibility that he could let you guys stay in that facility until he's ready to demolish the site, if he's going to demolish the site.
We don't know, we don't, you know, we can.
Pete, that isn't, the last time you told us in the back, you told us that the first thing he's gonna do is tear it down, so.
He did say that, but, but again, I've been talking to him, and again, he's been looking for what he's going to put there. He had some ideas, some of them fell through, so, you know, he's had some times, now he has a potential tenant now, and he's working with some engineering firms to draw up a site plan and present it to the planning board, and hopefully that will.
So then, what are we gonna do with the Wharton House?
He needs the whole site for what he's looking to do.
Yeah, but what are we gonna do with that?
We moved it once already, I don't think it's.
He'll probably tear it down.
You can move it as much, you know, you, you're already tearing down enough historic sites left in town. I think there's only a.
Where are we tearing down?
What historic sites are we tearing down, Bernie?
There was a guy called up, he's going back over the years, one of the old, old timers. He tore down both railroad stations.
We didn't tear them down.
The town tore them down years ago. He's talking generally about the town, and that there's, there's gonna be nothing left. He even went back to the fire at thirty-five that come through and burned down all the big old Queen Anne's and that on Route Nine.
That wasn't us.
And the, and the only one, the only house that was saved at that time was the Wharton House. The Wharton House was, you know, our town's named after General John Lacy. You know, the history of, of the general, he's well-known, he was a munitions expert. They used the iron bogs at a factory branch, Bamber Lake, make the cannon shot. The Wharton House, the owners of that, it was built in eighteen sixty-three. The owner had two sons that went to war, civil war. One was killed in a civil war. So, it has a lot of attachment to the veteran family. You know, is it just an old house we're gonna tear down? It, it means a lot, it means a lot to the people in town.
I know, but we can't move it again.
Why not?
Because we were at, when we moved.
We, we lifted it up once and moved it.
We talked about this at a meeting, I think it was Friday, or earlier this week, maybe Monday. It won't survive another move.
Yes, Monday.
It was Monday. It won't survive another move.
Why won't it?
It's too old, it's too, you know, structure and so forth like that.
In my opinion, there's not a building on that side of the road from Community Hall all the way up to Sunrise Boulevard that shouldn't be demolished. Maybe one building. They demolished the guardhouse from the game farm that many people thought were historic. We got no notice. The state came in and demolished the guardhouse. Many people thought that was historic. The Methodist Church was demolished to make way for the Perkins. The old forklift freezer was demolished to make way for Rite Aid. So, I, I don't see the point of trying to save an old building that is, you know, historic to some, but, you know.
Well, you know, that's, that's your opinion, there's a lot of people that are against your opinion, and it, I think it's the wrong thing to do. You're taking a, an historic fact, not only away from the town, but away, also away from the historic factor it has with the veteran.
It was controver, it was controversial when it was moved back in nineteen eighty-four, whenever it was, and it shouldn't have been moved then, and.
There was a lot of controversy back then. And in fact, in fact, if I remember right, I was out there directing traffic that morning, and there were words between a committee man and a load of people that were in front of Square Deal Hardware. And it was two weeks or a month, I think, before Election Day. And that committee man lost the election by six votes, and he couldn't figure out why. It has a lot of repercussions.
Yeah, and I, it, it's hard making these decisions.
No. Yeah, but I mean, there's something you can do with it. You don't have to tear it down and make it a. You know, you say everything should be condemned, there's two other houses on that side of Nine, I think one, one oh three, one twenty-four, and one twenty-six, or, no, there are numbers on that, one oh three.
Yeah, they're odd.
One twenty-five, one twenty-nine or something, that are listed as historical prospects to be historic, historic buildings.
Our town didn't.
It's for sale right now, and there's a possibility that that might go too.
The one next to the church?
Because we've gotten inquiries from people, because it is a nice, deep lot.
So, that's supposed to close in October, by the way, there is a contract for sale.
Yes.
Anything else, Bernie?
I'm, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
What are we gonna do? What are we gonna do? Tear down the Wharton House then? Is that the answer, or?
I would think so. I would think that's a good problem.
It's up to the new property owner, once we close on the property.
Up to him.
I know, you're gonna upset a lot of people. You know, it's a.
Anything else, Bernie?
It's, I think they call it political suicide.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Lynn Foley Herring and my husband Bill Herring, and I'm sorry if I get emotional, I'm a Gold Star family member. I'm here as a resident, I'm also a driver for VetWorks, so give me a chance.
Take your time.
I just want to say thank you to VetWork, and thank you for the township. I'm driving veterans to their medical appointments where they can't go up to the East Orange Facility, or Lyons, or other locations, and VetWork provides that service to them. And you can't imagine how grateful all these families are. The spouse, the veteran brings their spouse, we ride up together. They are so thankful for VetWork for their services. They are so thankful that this is the one thing that we provide. I was just recently up at the Lyons VA Nursing Home, which I've never been before, it's absolutely gorgeous, and people were asking me, how do they get a job with VetWork? And I said, it's strictly a not-for-profit in Ocean County. They don't offer that anywhere else. So, thank you all for the services that you're providing for our veterans, and for the people that have provided our freedom for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public who wants to talk about the VetWork situation?
I just wanted to say.
Sure. Can you kick?
Bill, 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 there's protocol.
No, Bernie.
Veronica knows us all too well, right Veronica?
Yes, sir.
I'll take care of it. I just want to say one thing, you guys do a hell of a job in this township. Been a long time in municipal land use laws, she knows that all years, forty-five years now in Rawway, but I've been down here full-time, and maybe someday I'll join your planning and zoning board, but we'll see what happens. All I can say is that what my wife said, we're a Gold Star family. Man, it's tough when you lose somebody. Lost them in Vietnam. We were at the helicopter memorial, what was it, about four years ago Lynn? And you never knew what it was like when they flew those four Hueys over the top when they did that ceremony for the helicopter pilots in Vietnam. So, having said that, I heard everything you had to say, and you're all on public record, but I don't have to say that. Do what you can to help these people. Lynn, you know Veronica, we give anything we can for the town, you know, I talk to you a lot. You do a hell of a job down here. We support you a thousand percent. And she got a little emotional.
That's okay.
But it's tough. She's from Seymour, Wisconsin, go figure that out, she's country, she's a cheese head. And she always brings back cheese curds, trust me.
They said there's a pretty woman behind every tree in Wisconsin.
Guess what? I married one.
No, there ain't no pretty one.
So, I just wanted to come up here and say, Veronica, you know, I always talk to you all the time, you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Do what you can, whether you gotta move the house, or find somebody else, I don't know. What are they putting in there, Veronica?
I'm not at liberty to discuss the tentative.
It's a restaurant, I guess, or something, yeah.
It, it's a retail space, so I, I don't mean, I don't mean a strip mall, right?
No.
Yes.
Got a lot of them. But I just wanted to come up and say, you guys are doing a good job. Tim?
Thank you.
I met you guys at all of that, we'll be at the GOP thing.
Thank you.
And.
I can't say that.
Why?
Yes, he can, he can say it, we can't.
I can. Hot dogs and hamburgers, but I just, I wanted to say, after what my wife said, thank you for everything you're doing. What do you think, guys? You got an answer tonight, you got an answer tonight. You're working on it. Give him a chance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on, I think, I think Steve, did you want to say something?
Did they answer your questions?
Okay.
Are you speaking, or? Are you, are you speaking? I just don't want you to get.
State, state your name, state your name in town.
My name is Bill Pavaric, I'm the Commandant of the William H. Smith Detachment, we're a Lacy detachment.
Okay.
A six-six-seven, and we're here to support VetWork. On behalf of the detachment and myself, I want to thank Bernie, and thank you guys too. You're doing a hell of a job.
Thank you.
And we do want that facility to remain. They, they do everything. I mean, you know, Bernie brings them in, gives it, takes them off the street, and it's up to you to keep them here. I mean, that's my opinion, and the detachments.
We're doing everything we can to keep it in.
I'm sure you will, and.
We will.
As far as moving that building goes, I was listening, I'm a resident from Staten Island originally. They moved pre-civil war houses miles, okay? I don't know if you know where Richmond Town is.
In one piece.
In one piece. I don't know, I, I don't know, but they can be done. You have to get the right mover. They will move that house, I'm sure they will. Okay, and I hope it does stay intact. Okay? Thanks a lot, thank you very much.
Anybody else on the, hold on Bernie, anybody else? Yes, sir.
Don't troll me out. Jim Barrow, from a Lacy detachment, or Corporal William H. Smith detachment. Being veterans, you know, we're always used to being low man on a totem pole. You know, we're always forgotten about, we're the last people to be thought about anyway. Here, I think what we're missing is just information. We're not being fed information on what's happening with VetWork. You can see the frustration, you can see it being posted on websites. When we don't know what's happening as far as our lives are concerned, we get really frustrated, and we will make it hurt. But if you can meet up with Bernie when you're having these meetings, then it won't get out of control. Trying to keep it from Bernie, or thinking you gotta do something before you talk to VetWork, is not the right way to handle it. We should be involved in those decisions, or even in the meetings, just to hear what's going on. Then you won't get all of this going on, on the outside. You know, we're always low man on a totem pole. We always get kicked out.
That's your opinion, sir.
And, you know, I just really wish he's involved with these meetings on where we're gonna be moved. You know, it's, if he's updated, we're updated, we won't make a big stink on the outside.
And I've been working on it for two weeks solid, trying to work this through.
Ah, yes ma'am, but as you can hear from Bernie, he's not getting any updates, right? When he don't get any updates, we hear.
I need to have construction officials look at the place to make sure everything's, can be done.
Yes, ma'am.
There's a lot of things that's involved, and I didn't want to get anybody else involved until I know that we can do it.
Ah, yes ma'am, but just little phone calls to say, hey, we're still working on it, just to keep up.
We have said that, though, we have.
All right. I, I must have been in the wrong meeting then, because that's not what I've been hearing. Sorry about that.
I just want to finish up with just what she was saying, or, or she was saying was Herring up. Today she drove, the woman she drove.
All the way up to Lyons.
To Lyons. I, her husband has, has Alzheimer's real bad. He went downhill like really fast. And I've, in fact, she was my nurse, my postulate nurse, so we got to know one another pretty good. Boy, somebody got it. But what happened, I heard the husband went down, was going down real fast, and she was gonna lose her house. She lives down in Manahawk. I ended up working with her, myself and another woman, up in the Veterans Office in Tom's River. We ended up getting, and she, she was going to nursing homes, he was out of control. He was, you know, at the point where he didn't know what was going on, lost it all. She couldn't control him anymore. VetWork was driving him around with the husband and that. She was, the last time she, well, a month ago she called me, she was losing her house, she had to sign everything over to a nursing home. We made some phone calls to the, to the VA. Next week she gets a letter, and they knocked her husband out at a hundred percent disabled. The next day she gets a phone call from Lyons to bring him right up, we have a bed for him, no cost. That's what we do down there. You know, it could have been any citizen here, you know, the guys, you know, we just had a good guy that I think most of us here know, that was a Vietnam vet that just got Parkinson's. Says, houses we went to, people with Parkinson's would deliver them cream farina, because they can't chew no more. It's a debilitating disease, and it's caused by age and orange. Those things, you know, you walk in there and you just start crying, you know, knowing that that's gonna happen. And what you said, what you and Pete said about the Trade Center, before I forget that. You know, there was two police officers, there was three police officers in this town that went up to nine eleven. Two of them are dead now, from nine eleven cancer, you know. They deserve to be recognized. I went up there the next day for five days. I have two types of cancer, you know, for, for what happened up there. There's gonna be more people die from the cancers that that caused than died that day.
It's already happened.
Yeah.
For five thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, no, and it's a shame, there's more, it's like age and orange in Vietnam. There was three and a half million of us that went over there. Fifty-eight thousand, God rest their souls, didn't come back, including your brother. Out of that, the number was, added to three point five million, I think it was one point, one point eight million died before their fifty-eighth birthday from cancer. You know, so really the government took us. Right?
Or suicide.
Or suicide.
But they took us over there and they poisoned us. You know, God bless America, you know? And this is what we fight. This is why, this is why we need help. This is why.
Absolutely.
You know, you gonna be at the Moose Saturday? I'll be there.
I'll see you there.
Thanks a lot, and I apologize, but I'm glad I did it because you.
No problem, Bernie, no problem.
Bernie, you don't gotta apologize to us.
I have separate stuff, something separate from VetWorks.
I'm involved, my husband and I are involved with several construction organizations, and one of the, the things that they're talking about now is the suicide in construction. And one of the things they did for us, and I can see if I can get them, is they gave us little poker chips. You know, when you have an emergency, you call nine-one-one. The poker chip is for those that are contemplating, depressed, can't talk to anybody, thinking about suicide, and it's a nine-eight-eight number. Anyone can call that. If you think this would be important, and we give it to the town, I can see if I can get some of these chips to pass out, because I've given them, and other people have given them to teenagers, and believe it or not, there have been several lives saved. But it's a nine-eight-eight number twenty-four hours a day for suicide prevention.
You know what, we have a municipal lines department here in our town, might be something you might reach out to, or have the scallywag about.
Okay, thank you. But for those of you that know veterans, and that's a big thing with veterans is suicide, or you have friends whose children start talking about things, tell them to call nine-eight-eight. You don't have to give them your name, you just talk to somebody and help them out, and they have saved lives.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll do that.
Anything, anything else from the public? Anything else from the public? Steve?
Good job, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Before I get to my primary, is this on? Before I get to my primary purpose, I want to clarify a couple documents with the mayor. What I have here is, I just got my new tax bill, and we get a newsletter from the township, four pages. The first page at the bottom tells me about how to pay my tax, with the tax rates. And on page four, there is, it tells you all about how you pay your taxes. And I was a little bit annoyed and surprised. There was no mention of the new township municipal project on the newsletter going to all the taxpayers, because as Steve said the last time I was here, the Lacey Township residents got to realize their taxes are going to go up. And I'm just going to ask the mayor...
I did not say that.
You did say that. I'm just going to ask the mayor, why, who made this? Who writes this?
It is a culmination of all of the departments, because there's certain things that are mandated by the state of New Jersey that we post in the newsletter.
And no one wanted to put anything about the new municipal complex?
That's not what that newsletter is for. That is for basic information.
It's all about, it's all, well, that's not, you mean building a new municipal complex is not basic information?
Not by those things that are required in the newsletter.
Next up, Jerry.
This is the scheduling for the, and the subject for township meetings. And I just want to make a point. Normally in August, there's only one meeting, right? July and August, normally. Okay. So you did mention about the new municipal complex, and you did bring it up. And I'm just saying that it was kind of unusual that I had someone coming at my house at 20 after 6:00 telling me that there was a meeting about the new municipal complex. And when I got here, you guys were already done, and it's normally at 6:30. Is there any reason why I got moved?
Because it's a special session? We moved it up?
Yeah, I scheduled it around the availability of everybody that was present.
Right. And what you've got circled here is the cooperative purchasing agreement, which is the purchasing agreement which...
Excuse me for one minute, I'd just like to say...
It was noticed in the newspaper.
We have to...
Can we close the door back there, please? Can someone close those doors?
If you want to speak, you come up and speak to us, but please don't yell.
All right, I'm sorry. And you've got it circled here, the resolution about the, entering the cooperative purchasing agreement. That was an agreement to purchase co-op police cars at a cheaper rate.
That's all that was.
That's all that was.
I thought you said you had a meeting with Johnson.
But that was an executive session.
That was an executive session.
Okay. So you don't announce that. You just leave and go in.
Yeah, because a lot of that stuff is...
So when you met with Johnson, did they provide a number of what their complex is going to cost you? Did you get a number?
Let me explain this. Let me explain. We don't, we can't talk about that because it is proprietary. Let me explain. Okay? Until we sign the agreement, okay, all the work that they have done belongs to them, as in the agreement that we signed in April.
Right, the one that you didn't tell us about.
Well, no, that's not true.
That's not true.
It is true. I've been coming here since February, asking for any financial records, any updates with it, and I just got this the other day from online about an agreement, and that I want to talk to you about. So under the purchase that you're going to do, it's under the private-public partnership. Financial transparency is one of the cornerstones of this, and you're not giving us financial transparency. Just like you took it upon yourself in this document, someone who said that it was, the township has determined that it's beneficial for the township taxpayers to spend 100-plus million dollars on a new complex.
I don't know where you got that.
But you got to provide proof on that. So I'm going to get to that. But anyway, anyway...
Excuse me, Steve, can I ask you a question? Where are you getting the proof? Can you show me the proof on that 100 million dollars? Because I haven't seen that anywhere.
Well, it's very simple math. Public-private partnership, you've got to spend at least 50 million dollars. Since you guys have no money towards this new complex, if you go by, I went to the current interest rate at that time, and with interest, it would have been 119 million dollars on the 50, without counting the 30-year maintenance fee, which is millions more, and not even to mention the gigantic building, what it's going to cost, the air conditioning and heat it. So that's where I got my number from. I took the minimum number that the public-private partnership requires. You guys are making history, the only township in the entire state of New Jersey that's getting bamboozled into this, and we're going to pick up the money. But I do want to talk to the mayor about this document. And I numbered the pages, so I just want to, real quickly, I don't want to spend a lot of mindless time with this. So anyway, you're aware of this document, right?
These are the Oprah requests.
Okay, turn the page. Hold on, hold on. The front...
You asked your question.
Go ahead.
Please let me answer.
Go ahead.
I don't see Oprah requests.
Okay. You're right. You're right. No, 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 don't pass it yet, because I want to go to page three. Maybe I numbered it. So page three at the top, this is from Brenda McIntyre, and it's going to Jen Abbott, who apparently works for Johnson Controls. And then it's CC to you, Mr. Kennis, Chris Connors, Jerry Dasky, and others. So if you turn to page, oh, I do want to ask, on page five, the whole page is blanked out. Okay? So you know what happens when someone blanks out a page? They got something that they don't want you to see.
Is that a redacted page?
Yes.
You got that page?
I don't have it in front of me, no.
Oh, okay.
Our clerk, our assistant, just indicated that's a redacted page.
That's a redacted page.
Then, could you turn to page seven?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. On page seven, the other side of page seven, under recitals. If you go down to E, it says, whereas on or about the 17th of November 2022, township determined that the project was in the best interest of the public and authorized representatives of the township to negotiate a proposed public-private partnership agreement with Johnson Controls. So my question to the mayor is, who determined that it's in our best interest? What evidence do you have that this 100 million dollar-plus complex is to our benefit? I need to know. I think about it at night.
The township committee? Your elected representatives?
That's it. So you five people control all this money, and it's not going to go, it's not going to be put for a vote for referendum, right? There's not going to be a vote. You told me that every time. You don't need our vote. You don't care what we got to say.
You don't publicize it.
Well, there's...
Wait, the person at the microphone is the one...
There's supposed to be, this is according, I got this right out of the law, sufficient public interest to build the new complex. And I know very little people that have interest in that being built. In fact, they don't even know that it's being built. And you had an opportunity with that tax letter that you send to all of us taxpayers, letting us know how to pay taxes, when to pay taxes, but you don't say that just what? Your taxes are going to go up for the next 30 years because the five of us think it's best for you that we build 119 million dollar building right back there, and you have zero money to put down. I mean, we were in porn yesterday. We are, we do have a little bit of intelligence. And you know what really, really got me right from the beginning when I started watching this? Because I was involved in a lot of legal stuff. I notice, I go to the Republican meetings, not one word. I go to these meetings, not one word. I go back to Republican meetings, not one word. The elephant in the room, no one wants to talk about, and I commend you, you actually talked about it tonight. But anyway, getting back to this, the law, this is a law, right? And you are the only township in the state of New Jersey in four or five years that are going to get bamboozled into this. And you all are in agreement, because you already said you're going with the new building. I know you're going with the building. I'm not sure with him. I heard the other guy had different opinions. But I heard you all on board. And you know what really ticks me off? Is the fact that you didn't provide us that document. We have every right to know every financial thing you do with our money, just like the $35,000 you spent on an engineer's report that was a smokescreen because you already signed the thing with Johnson, right?
What have we signed with Johnson except...
Oh, okay.
Except the...
Okay, all right, hold on. You got the document in front of you. You got the document in front of you. Did you sign this document? I got the unsigned version. The version I got, right here. Page 18. Page 18. You see a signature? No signature. Did you sign, it was, page 18, signed.
That was the one that was given to you guys prior to the meeting that we supplied to him. The one in the file where the contracts go is signed.
So it's signed? Who's, can you reveal who signed it?
But, yes, I signed it.
You signed it, okay.
Okay.
How come you never told us that you signed that? You signed this back in April, guy. April.
It was a resolution on a township agenda.
It doesn't matter. It's spending money. You're spending our money.
And it was...
It's over a million dollars.
It's a resolution that was...
Look, I'm talking to the mayor. I'm talking to the mayor.
First of all, let's calm down. Let's calm down. Right here. Let's see, where, one, two, three, where, the fourth, whereas, whereas the aforementioned agreement...
Hold on, what page are you on?
The first page of Resolution 2023-136, right here, the one I signed.
Page six or seven?
No, it's the first...
Five?
First page.
Of the document, of the document he provided you, what page number?
On recital?
I don't think it's in here. It's not in here. It's not in here.
It might not be in there.
You've only got the back part of this. Okay.
It's the resolution with the agreement.
Right.
It's the resolution.
The resolution is, if you back at it, it's, you're going to owe a couple million dollars of our money, just like the $35,000 you threw in the toilet, because that was a smokescreen. Making this building four times bigger, what are you putting in here? A circus?
Okay, let me, if you may, if I may. Whereas the aforementioned agreement does not call for any monies to be expended by the township to date, but rather authorizes Johnson at its sole cost to begin preliminary design and drawings and plans for the project. We have not spent a dime with Johnson Controls. We went out for the engineering report on this building. As I have said, we wanted to gather all the facts to make sure, let me finish, to make sure we were going to make the right decision. That's, that's it right there.
Well, you've been making the wrong decision, okay? That's not my opinion. I represent taxpayers in this township that don't come here, that are opposed it. I represent the taxpayers that don't even know about it, and I represent the taxpayers that live week to week, paycheck to paycheck, that can't afford, that you've got this big new building back here for 50 people, but it's to our benefit. Come on.
Can you go back to the design statement that you made? You don't want to announce?
No, you can come up, you can come up. Let him finish, please.
Because you made a statement.
Let him finish. Let him, Mr. ...
On page nine. You on page nine?
Yes.
You've got termination payments, $243,000. On page, the following page, $812,000. You're not getting roped into this, are you? Honestly, honestly, are you telling me? Because you told me you're going with the new municipal complex. You told me that. Right at this meeting. Same thing with Mr. Kennis.
We told you...
Yes, you did.
We told you...
Yes, you did.
I'm telling you, we told you, once we get the financing, one of three things is going to happen. We either build new, is one option, put additions and rehabilitation, this building and a police station, or do nothing.
You're not rehabilitating, you're putting a four...
I told you, those are the three.
$32,000, $32,000 addition on it.
Once we received all the financial information, which we don't have yet...
That ain't fixing this building, dude.
I'm telling you right now, we don't have all the financial information.
Well, you're not telling the truth. This is the document right here.
That is, anything you have is not a...
You're putting a 32,000 square foot, 32,000.
You're sure? You've seen the plans?
It's right here. I got it right here.
That's the plans?
What's the plans from where?
Do you have the blueprints?
What are those?
What are those?
What's that?
No, that's the engineer's report on this building.
It's an engineer's report.
On this building.
You've never seen this?
I did see it.
On this building. On this building. You're referring to this building.
Well, it's not renovating the building. It's putting a 32, 32,000 square foot addition on.
Correct.
Right.
Correct. Because as we have said...
I'm just clarifying what Steve said. It's not just renovating this building.
And the police station, addition to the police station.
I ain't got a problem with the police station.
Because we can't use the basement anymore.
Why?
Once we...
What do you need it for? All documents go on microfiche. You don't need a new building to store documents.
Mr. Farley, please, ask a question, allow them to answer it, okay? If you keep interrupting their answer, then we're not going to get anywhere, okay?
We haven't gotten anywhere since I've been coming up here. I asked, wait a second, Mr. Connors. You're an attorney. You're a smart man. I asked for... Well, I think you're a smart man. How's that? All right? But anyways, and you are, you're a decent guy. Anyways, and you really all are decent people. You make me come up here. You make me come up here. You're all decent people.
You know what I like, Steve?
But anyway, hold on.
One day you should sit here, one day, one day and be on the other side.
You know what, maybe I will run for office. Maybe I'll get on, maybe get on that half committee.
One day.
And keep it from going the wrong way. Because you need a voice, you need a voice of reason on that.
You think it's so easy to sit here.
Follow one person. Like you do.
Wait, wait.
I don't follow anybody.
No, but no, that's absolutely false.
That's, that's the perception I got, that's what a lot of people tell me, and these are people I don't even know.
I talk to a lot of people too, and that's not what they tell me.
You talk to different people than I do.
Okay, so go ahead, finish, finish up, please.
Okay. Now. Regardless of what you do, if, number one, you're not having town hall meetings about this. You're not shabbing financial transparency. You guys signed a document, I don't know, if you sign a document, that means it's in place. And it does have monetary values on that document. If you say you didn't do nothing, I guess you didn't do nothing.
Mr. Farley says.
Let Mr. Connors talk.
Mr. Farley says is, is, there's truth to what he's saying. There are financial obligations under the memorandum of understanding. The value of it depends upon how far down the road the governing body goes. There was a memorandum of understanding. It is not an agreement, it's not an application filed with the state and New Jersey Department of Treasury that has to approve any application or agreement. So you may get the New Jersey Department of Treasury to agree with you, in which case.
I, I plan on getting ahold of them. In fact, who, who are you communicating with the Department of Treasury? Because I wanna call them, who is it? You got a name? You got a name?
Local finance board, it's been several different people each time we've called and got.
Alright, give me a name, you gotta have one person that you know.
It's why it might be a little easier said than done, but, but the Department of Treasury, and, and I say that because I don't know how, how long ago you attempted to call the depart, the state of New Jersey for anything, okay? But the Department of Treasury has to approve it through the Division of Local Government Services review by, by the, by the Deputy Attorney General. There are financial obligations, if the governing body decides not to pursue it, there would be financial obligations. This, the, the amounts that are stipulated in this memorandum of understanding is a schedule based on the stage of the progress of the project. If the governing body decides not to, and they have not signed an agreement with Johnson Controls, they have not, they cannot sign.
Why don't you just terminate it now and come up with a better idea?
I'll get back to you.
Why wait, you know, just like you do with the veterans, you torture them, so now when you're done with them, now you're gonna torture us. Like it's gonna be lingering another six months.
Well.
Just terminate it. Come up with a better idea, there's gotta be a better idea than $120 million.
Mr. Farley.
The people don't have the money, you understand?
Let us talk.
If we can't, if we can't have the discussion, then I'm gonna suggest to the mayor that we go to someone else. If you're not gonna allow comments to be made from the governing body, okay? We're not just gonna have a, a shouting match where you get to make an opinion. You can make your opinion now and then sit down and there will be no more questions. Alright, we're trying to, I'm trying, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be nice about it.
You are.
And answer your questions, okay? And so what I'm, what I'm telling you is that there's been no agreement signed with Johnson Controls for the construction of this building that commits the governing body to that project. A lot has to be done, including getting all the financial information. Once that is obtained, before the governing body makes a decision, there would be a public meeting. And the governing body can have as many as it wishes, but it has to have at least one to pass a resolution in order to approve the agreement. I would suggest to you that there'll be more than just a meeting before that agreement would ever be signed. There will be public hearings, public information that will be given, okay?
Is this after you made the decision or before you?
Now, the decision can't be made.
Right.
The decision cannot be made until it's made here in public before the people. That's the law, okay?
You're right.
And I'm gonna make sure that they conform with the parameters of the law. Okay, so.
Okay, and you feel that you all been complying with the law so far?
Up to this point, to best my knowledge, understanding, belief, we've complied with every aspect of the set.
I respectfully disagree with you.
Okay, and now.
I mean, why would, why would Regina have to put a request for information in?
Because that's the law.
To get something from April in September?
It's called the.
What's that called?
Open Public Records Act.
Okay, but now it's all, go ahead, go ahead.
She's complied with the law in making those requests, and the governing body through its administrator has complied with the law in responding in a manner in which it is. Now, there are two prompts. If somebody didn't get information that they thought that they had a right to, or something was redacted that shouldn't have been redacted, then under the Public Records Act, you can either go to the Public Records Council, or you can go to Superior Court and file an action. If you believe, if you truly believe that the governing body has erred in any of the procedural portions of this public-private partnership statute, you can file a prerogative writ action in Superior Court or file an order to show cause. Any one of those, in which case then.
Well, we, we plan to file something.
Okay, alright.
Because I, I can't understand, if you sign a document in April that has financial numbers on it, and, uh, uh, private-public partnership law says financial transparency, okay? We should not have to put a request in to get something, and then we get the copy that has no signatures on it.
Let me give you.
It's wrong, it's wrong.
Let me give you the closest.
It just airs, it's a suspicion.
Let me give you the closest analogy that comes to mind, and it may not be perfect, but it, but it's an analogy. We just did a resolution tonight to pay $11 million, $11 million in bills. Do you have a copy of those bills?
No, but I, I do, I do have. I do have another complaint.
And I do, and I would suggest to you, if you wanted it, you would have to file an Open Public Records Act in order to get a copy of those bills.
Find out how you're spending my money.
Well, there were several, there were several other resolutions, and I can go about five or six of them, that spend money approaching hundreds of thousands of dollars for a number of things that have. So every expenditure of money requires a resolution of this governing body.
Okay.
Everyone.
Alright.
This is not any different.
Again, I already voiced my opinion on your resolutions. When you get one that's got to do with money, one of the committee members should get up and respectfully tell the audience what you're spending our money on and why it's a good idea. Instead, we run through it like we're running away up a mountain somewhere and no one knows what's going on.
Steve, every resolution, whether, whether Veronica's sitting here, or now it's Amy sitting here, she reads the highlights of the resolution, okay? It's always, it's read, it has to be read.
Honestly, I can't understand a word that girl says. I really can't. Honestly.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe Mr. Connors could, uh, read that. It's too fast, it's not loud enough and clear enough, and again, when you're spending millions of dollars, you would think one of the council members would get up and justify it. Alright, uh, when are you meeting with Johnson again?
No idea at this point.
No idea.
Nope, we haven't scheduled anything else.
And again, you can't tell me what the money number was that they proposed in, uh, the little, uh, private meeting you had.
Till once we sign the agreement, then we can tell you.
You make me nervous when you say that.
Well, it would be before you sign the agreement. Well, everybody's, before you sign.
And it's so if.
Okay, again, again, we need an advisory committee of committee people and public people to get together and analyze everything that you wanna do.
Is it gonna be allowed any women on that board?
Any women? Absolutely, women, guys, we don't, we don't, we don't, we're not. What do you think, I only want men?
Thank you for your comments, sir. Steve, thank you.
Yes.
Gavin, I'll get to you next. One, one of you guys at a time, alright? This gentleman over here. Just say your name, please.
Glenn Darwell.
You live in Fork River Lacey or?
I know Drive, sunny downtown.
Oh, can't give us her address.
Can I, what was your last name again, sir?
Darwell, D-A-R-W-E.
Okay.
Okay, I'll try and make this really quick.
Please.
First off, I wanna extend my condolences to your mother.
Oh, thank you, sir.
That's, uh, I know that pain.
I appreciate it.
And Veronica, um, you may not remember this, but the last time I was here, we were talking about the same stuff. And as I sat down, you made a mention about the Sears catalog. Do you remember that?
I remember the, I remember the comment, I don't remember what it was about. I remember the comment, I don't remember what it was about though.
The catalog, and I said, you may not wanna mention that, and you said back, you know, I, I want you to know that I was not trying to embarrass you about that. So I'm glad you didn't remember that.
There was a comment about, I remember there was a comment about, I don't remember what it was about.
It was the Sears catalog. Yeah, I remember the Sears catalog. Anyway, um, excuse me, I have three things I'd really like to talk about, make it, try and make it quick. First off, uh, I have a degree in HVAC, I've been a chief engineer at large hotels in New Jersey and Maryland. And I wanna tell you, dealing with JCI, you're dealing with the most expensive corporation for doing this job, okay? That's number one. Number two, you have no information to make a decision on. You have zero. You have one proposal. You cannot make a decision on one proposal. Who's the other company?
AST Development.
Okay.
And there was a, there was a hearing with them here, both, both developers.
Okay, I didn't hear that tonight.
Yeah.
My apologies.
Oh, yeah, that was back in October or November of last year?
Yes, November.
Something like that, yeah.
November. Because without, with just one, you can't really make a decision.
Well, let me explain to you how that, we, we got, we had an unsolicited proposal from JCI, okay?
Oh, yeah, you know how that works.
Let me just, once we get that, then we have to go out and, and, and.
You have to deal, you have to deal with them.
Right, and then we have to ask for the second, or anybody else who wants to come in and do that. We did all that, we met all the guidelines, we were talking to the attorneys, what newspapers we had to put it in, the whole bit. The only other company that came in was AST.
Okay.
So we, we've done everything we can.
I haven't heard that before, any meetings or anything, so thank you, I appreciate that.
It's fine.
Beware of JCI, that's all I'm gonna say, we need to deal with them, okay? And, um, this building, the extension on this building, I know that the HVAC system's been talked about here before. I can tell you I know what's wrong with the, it's making noise right now, I know what's wrong, okay? Not a big deal to fix HVAC system. It's a hell of a lot cheaper than, I don't know, $20 million or whatever.
We can't get the parts for them because they're so old anymore.
No, no, I understand that, I understand it. I will bet you can. I will bet you can, you gotta go to the right, you gotta know the right people with that, okay? But in any case, even if you get it replaced, this bones of this building is magnificent. They are, this is a great building. So is that building over there. Anyway, uh, one of the questions I wanted to understand is why this decision to do this is not gonna go to a vote with the people? I haven't heard an answer yet.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Why is there not gonna be a vote? The people vote, a binding resolution on this. This kind of, this isn't spending $100,000 on bills or $11 million, this is a significant tax increase.
The law doesn't require it, that's why.
That, that's irrelevant, that's a bad, bad answer, okay? That's a bad answer.
That's the truth.
Okay, okay, the law requires, I can, I don't have to jump off the bridge, that's my choice. But for the people, for the people of this town, they deserve to vote on this. This isn't chump change. There deserves to be a vote, a binding vote.
Couldn't it be a binding vote? You can have a non-binding referendum. You are allowed to have a non-binding referendum.
And you can't have a binding referendum?
You cannot have a binding referendum, no.
With that amount of money?
It makes, the, the law doesn't recognize money as the parameters for non-binding referendums. There's a specific statute that allows municipalities to have non-binding referendums. It does not allow binding referendums.
Okay, so that would be worth.
And I suspect it could be because it would be on a November ballot and therefore might commit future governing bodies that are not there at the time, so, well.
It's a lot that people owed.
Well, I'm just saying, this, this is probably the rationale why the statute is silent as to whether it's binding. It could be, it can be non-binding, it has to be non-binding.
Okay, I don't, I don't buy that explanation, but be it as may.
I, I, I'm telling you with the law. I might, I might not buy every engineering perspective either.
I'll bet you won't, if you read it, I'll bet you won't buy a lot of it.
Alright.
And my last thing.
You show me where I'm wrong.
I will.
Okay.
Not on the law. Not on the law, no, I'm sorry, not on the law.
Alright, let's just call it a true cent.
Last thing is, uh, something that, um, I've been meaning to bring up for the last couple of years here. Uh, something that I find, you mentioned we're gonna buy new vehicles, okay? I find it absolutely despicable that we have all-black vehicles with ghost writing on the side. I can't, no woman in danger, nobody can identify a police car in this town. None, that is the worst thing I've ever seen, any place I've ever lived in my life. Prevention is better than, oh, let's chase them afterwards with the ghost car so we can collect some money. So I'm asking that you don't buy black cars, and if not, change to all the cars we have and the ones you buy, and do not put black ghost writing on their cars. That is unsafe. I don't think any of you would want your wives, your grandchildren in the cars, and they're being followed by somebody, and the cop car goes this way and they can't identify it, and maybe there's some bad results from that.
That's a good, that's never been brought up before, it's a good point, well.
Good point.
Right now, I just hope we could buy cars.
Right.
Well, okay, but if, even if we can't, I beg you, please.
Something more concerned.
Change what we have.
Things, you know, things go along in a trend, you know, sometimes you see black and whites, solids, whatever, or all whites. So it's, unfortunately, this is the trend in police business now, I'm not saying it's right, but it is the trend, and there are some things coming down that are changing, but it has been brought up before, as they said.
Trends are worth, so are these miserable things.
Yes.
You know, uh, I'm telling you, it's just bad, 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 those ghost cars. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else besides Gavin? Come on, that, no, you gotta come back, alright, don't worry about it. Gavin, come on.
Thank you, Gavin Rozi, Fork River, and I wasn't gonna speak about the police cars, but I definitely wanna agree with the previous gentleman. I, I think the, the black cars, I think it conveys a certain message. Um, I think we should have clearly visible marked cars, I think it's a safety issue, I think it's a better course, and, you know, we had the previous, I think the old design on the Lacy police cars was pretty good, I liked the white, the white and blue, clearly visible. Um, I, I just don't like that trend, you know? Fun, fun fact, you know, even in the Soviet Union, their, their police force, the Milizia, they had clearly marked police cars even in a totalitarian state, so, fun, fun fact there. I wanted to start out on a more positive note, Pete, I'm, I'm very sorry for your loss, uh, my, my sincere condolences. A few meetings ago, Mayor McDonald, you talked about the way you run public comment here, and you said you're, you're different from other towns that try to restrict people. I wanted to thank you for that, I, I think that's great. Um, you know, other towns, you know, they'll try to cut people down to three minutes. One example in our town is our, our school board, you know, they're the example of everything not to do. You know, they started cutting people down when things were getting contentious and the time limits, so I wanna thank you for that. I like the rich exchange that we have here, and I hope we continue that tradition, I think it's a good thing for our town.
Let me just say, a while ago, uh, I think it was by the, the first thing on the road, they tried that here, and it didn't, it didn't go anywhere. This is America, the First Amendment, and we all sit up here voluntarily, and, you know, you guys, see Farley, I mean, he was yelling the whole time. We have to take it, and I'm not, I mean, will I ask you to stop, and so someone else can get up, and I'll bring you back up at another point in time? I have no problem doing that. But again, this is America, freedom of speech, we have to take it, so I, I'm okay with it, and I think everyone else is, we've never really restricted it.
I, I appreciate that, and you know, we won't always agree on every issue, but I think we can all assume good faith here. I think everyone here is up here for the right reasons, I think we all care about the town. We might not always see eye to eye on everything, so, um, I wanted to talk about the new municipal complex too. Um, I really haven't been saying too much over the last few months, I've kinda tried to keep an open mind. I didn't really feel strongly one way or another, I, I think there were some good points made on both sides. Um, but after some of the things that I've seen lately, I'm here tonight to voice my firm opposition to this proposal. I think it's the wrong project, I think it's the wrong company, and I think it's at the wrong time. And I think it's not too late for this committee and this governing body to right the course before we dig this hole any deeper with Johnson Controls. To me, looking at that pre-development services agreement, I was really concerned about some of the language that I've seen there. I've also done some research into Johnson Controls, and from what I've seen, and this is all verifiable, um, you can look at the citations on their Wikipedia page, they have a bit of a checkered past. For example, in 2016, one of their subsidiaries was forced to pay $14.4 million in fines under the Foreign Corrupt Practices Act for bribing Chinese Communist Party officials to win more business in connection with government-owned shipyards in China. Another instance, they moved their corporate headquarters, where they're domiciling their legal entity, to Ireland in order to dodge paying $150 million in American taxes. So, you know, thinking about all of the people we could choose for a project like this, I'm really not liking what I'm seeing, especially because this is gonna involve public funds. Most concerning to me, I read about two criminal trials involving their former CEO Dennis Kozlowski and CFO Mark Swart. They went to prison for stealing millions of dollars from the company, and they were found guilty after two trials, they had to have a second trial.
You, you're mixing things here, that, they, Johnson Controls bought Tyco.
Yes.
That's where Kozlowski and the other guy, they went to jail, they bought all kinds of crazy stuff. The, that's the reason Johnson Controls bought Tyco, was because Tyco crashed after those trials of ridiculous amount, hundreds of millions of dollars that they stole. That's the reason why Johnson Controls bought Tyco. Kozlowski and the other guy never worked for Johnson Controls, never. They, Tyco, uh, Johnson Controls bought Tyco in the midst of all that.
Sure, sure, and I'll, I'll accept that, you know, I, I, I think to me, you know, starting to see some of these patterns emerge, it's concerning. So this is, this is the company we want to roll out the red carpet for. Now, my biggest concern is actually some of the language that I see in this pre-development services agreement. So I'm gonna give you the disclaimer, I'm not an attorney, I don't hold myself out as such. I am no stranger to the Superior Court Law Division. This year, I hit my, my 10th Law Division case, uh, I'm arguing one of them tomorrow morning. Uh, I'm very familiar with Oprah and prerogative writs, I've done expert witness testimony in some of these Oprah cases, so I'm very familiar with what I'm about to talk about. with what I'm about to talk about. And, you know, don't take this personally, but the way I see this is, I think it is egregious, appalling, and unconscionable, some of the language in this pre-development service agreement, which to me, I see that as signing away this township's solemn obligation under Oprah to a private for-profit company. Not only is this clearly at odds with public policy, I believe that this language is flatly illegal because it violates the plain language of the statute. And I know this because one of my attorneys that occasionally represents me, she was just involved in an action where they tried to violate this, and it was actually Eunice Dwork for, the councilwoman in Seville that was tragically shot. The Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office, they tried to bring an Oprah order to show cause to stop the release of information, and she actually had to threaten the prosecutor's office with Rule 148 sanctions for frivolous litigation because there is no private civil cause of action. So let me get into the specific language. Page seven, section 12.2 states.
Hold on, let me get to that. 12, 12.2?
12.2. In pertinent part, I'm ignoring the first part with the boilerplate, talking about Oprah, talking about the seven-day periods, starting at, during the period prior to the release of the requested information, Project Co. may review the request, propose redactions to the requested information, including but not limited to redacting proprietary information, notify the township of any objection to the release of the requested information, including but not limited to notifying the township of requested information that is exempt from public access under Oprah, and this is the part that bothers me the most, and take legal action, including but not limited to filing a lawsuit to stop the release of the requested information. So I brought a printout from Westlaw. I'm happy to give this to you if you'd like it.
I'm not a lawyer.
Yeah, I would just like to finish it. I'd be happy to give it to you afterwards and speak further, but NJSA 47:1A-6 states, quote, "The right to institute any proceeding under this section shall solely be that of the demander." It was somewhat of a gray area, the courts have had a few cases with this, but the plain language of Title 47 says, "The only option, if you want to go to court," I've done this plenty of times, "it's a verified complaint, order to show cause. You could also throw in some common law claims because some stuff you could win under the common law that you can't get under the black letter of Oprah." Some municipalities, this township has not done it yet, I'm more concerned, you know, about probably Johnson Controls doing this, there has been instances, one example is in Irvington, they sued an 82-year-old woman who, you know, was similar to like somebody like myself or Regina, you know, that's somewhat of a frequent filer. They didn't like all of her Oprah requests, they tried to bring her to court. One of my attorneys represented her pro bono on this, and it's an abuse. I see it as intimidation, and I don't, I don't cast dispersions on this governing body. I don't think it's your intent to intimidate citizens from seeking information about this project. I'm more concerned about how this language got into this contract. You know, there's a term for people that bring lawsuits without any basis for a reasonable argument for an extension or reversal or a modification of existing law. It's called vexatious litigation. So I'm calling on this township committee to do two things. One, I'm calling on you to reject this proposal with Johnson Controls. I think it's not in the best interest of our town. I think this pre-development services agreement has a lot of landmines in terms of those penalties. I don't want it. I don't see anybody else that's really enthusiastic about it. I think there's other avenues for achieving some of your goals in terms of the space usage. The state of New Jersey and the judiciary, they have embraced remote work. They've allowed employees to work in a hybrid arrangement, two days a week. I think there's other avenues we could explore, but I'm really disturbed by this contractual language, and again, you know, I respect you, Mr. Connors, I respect Mr. Dasty. I don't cast any personal aspersions with respect to this, but if you look at the plain language of the statute, that the only basis for bringing in Oprah action is the prerogative of the demander. It's a mechanism for challenging either the refusal to release information or the sufficiency of redactions, there is no private civil cause of action under Title 47 to stop the release of information. And I think, you know, I'm too busy suing the school board right now. I've got, I've got an Oprah case, and I've got my OPMAs case, 9:00 AM in Tom's River Court tomorrow. I don't have the time to do it, but I think if anybody else wanted to, I think this is vulnerable to a declaratory judgment action to sever that language from the contract. So I would very kindly request that this agreement could be modified, because I think, one, it sends the wrong message to the public, two, I think it's clearly violative of public policy and the statute, and any legal research would confirm this. I have the printout from Westlaw, I'd be happy to share it, but with that, you know, that'll...
What you said, I'm not an attorney, you're not an attorney. I'm gonna let the attorney talk a little bit here. So, better, better than you, you know, he knows more about it than you and I.
Yeah, so that's, that's my primary concern, at least at this point, with the language, and I'll conclude my comments at that, thank you.
You want to address what he had to say, or no?
No, I don't have, you're gonna give me the... I certainly take a look at it, Gavin.
Anything else, Gavin?
No, that'll be it, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gavin.
Thank you, Gavin. Gavin, I wouldn't say that, Gavin, I wouldn't say you and Regina are frequent flyers with Oprah's, because I rarely get them from either one of you. Regina's, I think this is the first time in ages, probably.
I've been away.
Right.
I'm trying to play catch-up. I'm back. Regina DeSanza, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. Currently, who would be the Lacey Township Records Custodian? Is it still you, Amy?
Yes, still me.
It's still you, okay. Thank you for all that you have furnished thus far. It's been very interesting reading, to say the least. I have to say, the paragraph 12.2 that Gavin just spoke about, I found very disturbing as an Oprah frequent flyer. I have tonight a couple of more requests that I'd like to give you in writing and read them aloud. I would like if the township could provide the date and the time that the signed executed copy of the pre-construction PPP agreement was posted to the Lacey Township website as Resolution 2023-136 with Johnson Controls. I would also like it if you could provide when and where was the Johnson Controls PPP agreement signed, and where is the documentation, and who was present during the signing? And I would, well, I'm not done.
I'm sure that if the information is available, but that's not an appropriate public record action request.
Right, sure, I know.
Oh, you know that, okay.
And, well, there's minutes. I'm gonna give you these.
We can supply you with documents, documents.
I know, I'm gonna give you this, and you decide what to do with it, okay? And then I have one more request. Please provide the original signed copy of the April PPP pre-construction agreement with Johnson Controls for an in-person examination, and please call me to arrange an appointment. I had one other question also. Have you done a Treasury submission yet, because this agreement says it has to be done in 180 days?
No, we have not done a Treasury submission.
Not done yet, but are you close to the 180 days? I think there's a month left, according to the calculation.
I believe there is a month left.
A month left, okay, so my calculation was correct. I think that's most of what I wanted to know for right now. Oh, there was a remark made before that there's records online on the township's website. Two days ago, I was on the township's website, and I could not locate any minutes or any agendas for 2023, and Kathy told me she was behind, and she helped me find Resolution 2023-136, which was this signed agreement. So there was no way for me to locate that agreement myself, because I couldn't look at the agendas and I couldn't look at the minutes. All I had was a potential date of April 12 from the emails. That's all I had.
Usually you can type in the search engine.
They're not there. There is nothing for 23 posted.
You would have been able to find it via the resolution, because those resolutions are posted.
Right, but I didn't know the number.
I know, you don't have to know the number, because in the search engine, you can type in a key word, so you could have typed in Johnson Controls.
On your website?
Yeah, yeah, when you're on, where you've clicked the link to go to public...
Oh, forgive me, I'm done with websites.
You click the spot that says public records, so you know, it goes basically to the codebook, and on the left, it has all those documents. Then there's a search engine at the top. If you put parentheses around, let's say you want to do Johnson Controls, so it's two words, you put around it, it will find the documents that actually say Johnson Controls. It's not going to find everything that says Johnson and everything that says control. So if you do that, you can...
You need double quotes.
Yeah, double quotes, yeah, I said parentheses, sorry. Double quotes, and that's going to find anything that has the word Johnson Controls in it.
All right.
So that will narrow down your search.
I've never tried it. I will go home and try it. Under the public document section, here you go. Whatever you've furnished, I appreciate. Thank you.
Is that it, Regina?
For now.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else? This lady over here. One, yes? I'll get, I'll get to you, Rich.
That's okay, we like to hear personal stuff.
State your name, please.
Hi, I'm Donna Brophy. I was here, I don't know if it was last month or the month before, regarding the growth on the walkway at Beach Boulevard, and I'm also representing many of my neighbors who have the same concerns. I just wanted to bring it up again. I know, I was here a few months ago, and there was a discussion about some of you council members coming, too, to check the growth and the overgrowth, and the, you know, the understanding is that it's to help the turtles, but right now, those holes going out into the water are totally covered. The growth is so extensive, I took pictures, but I mean, I certainly...
So we were supposed to have a meeting with the DEP on site on, was that August 30?
Yes.
But that was when the impending storm was coming in, and they canceled on us.
They canceled on us.
It was supposed to be a dual meeting, one for the site that you're talking about, and then also for the Bayside Beach Club with the properties that are eroding. They wanted to make, they wanted to come on site to look at it. They have not rescheduled that at all. We are, again, looking to have another dredging public meeting in the future to give updates, because we are working with Congressman Smith's office as well, to try to get some funding to help those eroding properties down there at Bayside Beach Club, possibly put that groin back out again, so that the sand would start to fill in and start to increase the backs of those yards that are, you know, the water's lapping at their back doors.
But that's a separate issue.
That's a separate issue, but trying to get the DEP out twice, so I was trying to combine it all in one.
Sure, would there be a way that you could notify?
I was going to do that, but, yes, we were going to do that, and then they called and canceled once that storm was on the radar, which really didn't disturb us that much at all.
We had Congressman Chris Smith scheduled to be there at the same time.
That would be great, yeah.
But, once they heard the federal, Congressman Chris Smith was going to be there, they didn't like that too.
Oh, well. It just would really be helpful just for someone to come out and see, because it's really not doing any justice to turtles. We have, in our yards that line that walkway, we have the covered cages to try and, you know, maintain to ensure that they stay safe. People pick them up, you know, we try our best to maintain them, but right now, the overgrowth is so thick, there's no way any turtles could get into any hole to go out into the water. There's just no way. It's just so overgrown, and it's just really not, I don't think it's, it's an eyesore, and it's really not helping anything or anyone, so...
Well, we can't cut, when can we cut that? October?
October, that's why I was trying to get the DEP out now, when the person's there.
We can't cut it till October. I guarantee you, October 1st, the guys will be down there to cut it.
I'm aware, and the other thing is, the sign says June to October, but, you know, two, does that mean it should be September and up to? I know you said October 15.
Yeah, I think that, I have to go back and look at the permit, but I thought it was going to be October 15.
Yeah, okay. That it's it? That's it?
Thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Bidnick, come on down.
Richard Bidnick here, Forked River. A couple things. Good evening, mayor and council, and Lacey citizens. In November of 2021, I came to a meeting with several citizens because I had known and heard grumblings about the municipal complex, the possibility of it being built. At that meeting, several people who were sitting on this body agreed with me that this was the wrong time to do this because of inflation that was going up, going on in the country, and because of the people in our community suffering, because of certain things that had gone on in Washington and the effects that it has had on all of us in our community. Since then, the tide seems to have turned where now we're no longer, we don't think that this is such a bad idea, even though the interest rates have continued to rise and the people in our community are continuing to suffer. There seems to be some sort of a desperate attempt, and this is the way I look at it, a desperate attempt by members of this body, which I'm not quite understanding what the modus is, the modus operandi is behind this. I mean, because they always say, in projects like this, they say, "Follow the money." So I'm trying to figure out where and what is really the motive behind what you people are trying to do, and I want to make sure that the people in this, that are at this meeting and the people in this town really do know what's going on. Okay, so on April the 13th, a document was signed by the mayor and Veronica, and in that, there are five different levels where if they withdraw, we are on the hook. We're already on the hook. So when they say they haven't spent any money, if they decide to not go forward with this, we're still going to have to pay, all of us. And I'm going to read this off right now, because I want the public to be clear about this, okay? So in stage one, it's $243,600. So that's the minimum, and I believe we haven't reached the submission stage, which is within 30 days, correct? Right, okay. That is the affordability analysis workshop. So that's what we are on the hook for. So once it goes to the Treasury submission, which has to be soon, it goes to $730,799, okay? So then, if they go beyond that, if they were to back out, there's the execution of land surveys and the geotechnical end. Then it goes up to $812,167. So then, let me go through this, because I got a couple pages here. Stage four is the delivery of civil and site plan designs through permitting and commission authority approval. Then, if they were to terminate at that time, it goes to $1,122,904. And the last stage is delivery of design for the long lead items, which comes to a figure of $1,306,344. So I just wanted to be clear that they say they haven't spent any money, but they actually have spent money, because at this point, if they back out, we are stuck and we're on the hook for that. Yes, it's pre-designed, right, exactly. Right, and that was decided on in April. Now, you know, I'm going to say some things here, I don't want them to be taken personally because I'm, these are my views, because I don't know these people personally. I live here in this town, I've been somewhat of an activist for the last 13 years. I hadn't come to a township committee meeting in almost 10 years because of something that had happened at a previous time, when I said I would not come up here and speak again unless it was something of vital interest to the community. I have kept my word, but I had to start coming out because I know that this is going to affect all of us. Our taxes are going to go up, this is a terrible time to do this, and, you know, the way I'm viewing things is from the perspective of a person who is going to have to pay for something that we don't really need, and we don't really want. The people on this body might want it, but the people in the community do not want it. So I basically was thinking about this, and my feeling is this, hold on one second. My notes here, okay. So, the Lacey Township Committee appears to be a narcissistic body. One, it lacks empathy. Case in point, it knows building a new municipal complex will put a financial burden on the taxpayers, and from what we have all seen, it seems that it could care less. Two, it has a sense of entitlement. It feels that it has the right to do whatever it wants, even if the public does not agree with it. Case in point, this municipal building, which is a total waste of our monies and has little to no public support. Number three, it doesn't care about its effects on others. It has the ideal that it is always right. Four, it devalues those that do not agree with it. If you challenge its sense of entitlement, you'll be ridiculed. Five, it lacks the ability to take responsibility for its negative actions. Six, it will lie and manipulate to get what it wants. Hence the lies all about being in a waiting pattern concerning getting the figures from the engineer's report when they had already signed a pre-agreement with Johnson Controls on April the 13th, and also knowing the complex will cost over $80 million. And I can say that because Mr. Dykoff, in his own words, from his comment at the MUA meeting, which I had the tape to listen to. So the cat is out of the bag. It's time for this body to start showing empathy. Start doing the job you were elected to do, and this is to have the township perform its duties efficiently, effectively, and accurately, and to figure out ways to lower... Jeez, excuse me. Okay. Start doing the job you were elected to do, and this is to have the township...
Go for lower.
Yeah. Okay. All right. It's time for this body to start showing empathy. Start doing the job you were elected to do, and this is to have the township perform its duties efficiently, effectively, and accurately, and to figure out ways to lower our taxes, not raise them. Start looking at the money you collect in taxes like it was your own checkbook instead of the bottomless purse. Make this town affordable, and please, for once, stop all of this overdevelopment, which is costing all of us more money and making our town into a traffic zone and ruining the quality of life. It might also help if you started listening to the public who are paying your salary. In all actuality, many of us could care less what you think, it's of no consequence. The only voice that matters is the voice of the taxpayers who you are here to serve. And I just want to read this, too, because this was something that I pulled up. Mr. Dykoff, he posted this on Lacey Chatter. "Hi, all. "Hi all. I'll start this post the way many others do by saying, 'I don't know if this is allowed.' As many of you know, I'm a township committeeman here in Lacy. I have never politicked here, nor do I do my, on my personal page. What I do is try to educate or clarify as best as I can when a subject concerning the town comes up. With that being said, a hot topic right now is the idea that the township committee is seeking to build a new 40 million, well, it's 80 million, municipal complex. As it so happened, I ran into a resident at Caffrey's who was under the impression that I was one of the individuals on the committee who was spearheading this. Let me state unequivocally that I am not in favor of this project. As a matter of fact, I believe our own town hall is a beautiful building, which I look forward to seeing every time I return from out of town. I hope this helps to clarify my position. Thank you." Well, suddenly it seems to be that Mr. Dykoff has changed his tune. And again, this brings to the point, "Follow the money," okay? So again, I'm going to say this as I have said several times in the past. A war is brewing in this community. Is this what you really want? We are prepared to go door to door. We are prepared to speak to each individual taxpayer in this town and let them know that the government body has no interest in anything that we say. It's quite frankly, you are just going ahead with this with no public support. And we have to wonder, you are all accountable to the people. You will be up for reelection. And maybe it's time that we really start putting people up who are going to start listening to the people and show empathy because we're not seeing it. And I don't like the way I've seen members of the public be devalued at this meeting who have differing opinions than you may have. As I said, your real opinion is of no consequence. You are sitting up here to represent us. We pay your salary. We tell you what we want. And you do not have the support in this community for this building. Now, I know where this is coming from and I respect people, but you have to respect the public that you are elected to serve. You can't just go ahead and do something like this. You are going to divide the town. You're going to make enemies. And some of you have, maybe want to have a future political career. Are you really willing to sacrifice whatever future endeavors that you may have for yourself over something that is not wanted by the citizens of this community? I know you've tried to talk about having this recreation center in there, but quite frankly, I've been told on those certain terms that we would be charged. They want, they want us to pay for this building and that we're going to charge our community organizations money to use a facility that we are paying for. Do any of you think that that's a good thing? No, it's terrible. Absolutely, it's horrible. So quite frankly, I really think you need to rethink this whole process. And Veronica, I know that you've been wanting this township hall since I have been involved for 13 years. There's been grumblings about it. I know this is something you want to do before you retire.
Well, listen, this is a project that they've asked me to stay on and see them through until I retire, right? I retired last year and they've asked me to stay on.
Right. And look, you know I have the greatest respect for you. I'm asking you, on behalf of the taxpayers of this town, to take that desire that you have to do this and think about all of us that are going to have to pay.
I have a direction from the governing body and they task me with jobs to do and I will help them and assist them with the job that they task me to do.
I'm sure that is, but you know what? I know that you control the narrative in this town and I respect you for that.
So glad you think I have that much power.
Well, I know that you do. So quite frankly, what I'm saying to you is, listen to what I am saying to you. I don't, I really don't want to have to go to war. We really don't want to have to do that. And I don't want to see the town divided. I want us to see us come together, like Mrs. Giuliano said after nine, after 9/11, how the town was. I want us to work together to make the town better, but you have to start listening to what the people say. We aren't thrilled about this overdevelopment. We aren't. We don't like the traffic that's going on. We don't like the idea that historical buildings are being torn down for some ugly new building that you're going to put up there in the corner of Route 9. A lot of us actually like this town the way it was 20 years ago when I built my house. It's changing and it's not changing for the better. That's what I'm saying to you. Some people think development and building is wonderful, but not when it's ruining the quality of life for a lot of different people.
Mr. Bidnick, if I could, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yes. I just, I've heard this say, said it a few times tonight. So I wanted, I wanted to chime in. I've been, been quiet, but now's the time to speak. You're talking about overdevelopment. You get off at Parkway at 74, you make a left. Most of that, until you get to the, to the far western part of our town, we have 86 square miles in this town, you can't develop because it's protected pine lands.
Thank God.
Most of our, yes, okay, okay. So what I'm saying to you is, look at other towns within our county or in North Jersey. They look like New York, Los Angeles, or Chicago. We are fairly well-built out. A lot of our people live east of the Parkway. When you hear Mr. Kennett's talk, who's a land use professional with about 35 something years, he talks about building on commercial, in commercial zones to develop ratables to take the onus off of people. You look at your property value, your property value as people migrate down here from the north and out west and everywhere, people are choosing Lacy Township because we don't look like Los Angeles, New York, or Chicago. It's no knock against those cities. They're beautiful cities. I've been, I've been to all, yes, I have been to all three. I had to do a mental Rolodex check. It's been a long time since Los Angeles, but I have been to all three and I have deep roots up in New York City. It's where I was born. But I will, I will tell you, I like the quality. I like the way we look. It reminds me, this reminds me of Tom Schrever in the 80s. Now, there's a lot of development in other parts of our, of our county. We don't have that here. We're fairly well-built out. The pine lands commission indemnifies and protects. And we really, we really do have a good quality of life here. So I do take a little bit of a disagreement and exception with some of your comments.
Okay, that's fine. And that's your opinion and you're allowed. But some of us don't really think that having Walmart and these other stores, you know, if we had higher-end stores, maybe it would be more of a value and a draw to the town. We also have another bigger issue in this town. You talk about people wanting to move here. Look, young people who have children do not want to send their schools, their children to school that's 329 out of 339 in the state.
I hear what you're saying. That's a whole, and you know it. They're a whole different.
They are.
A different.
But you set yourself up for criticism when you took $500,000 from the MUA that you took and gave to that school. That's part of the problem. So I, I'm just bringing that up.
We did that to save jobs, plain and simple.
Exactly, but it is, where is it in your job description to be saving jobs at the school, which is its own independent body that taxes? This is the problem that I have with this. Because I know, I've been at that school, working at it for years. They are failing, okay? They're failing because they don't want to do the job. That's the issue. So the point here is, is that I have an issue that you took a half a million dollars from the MUA, which is the only really good organization that's run as a nonprofit, in my view, because they're very good with their money, and you gave it to a school which has not been running their. Look, the problems there are so unbelievable. And I mean, if I hadn't been so involved in this for so long, I could sit back and say to most people, they have no clue. But the issue is that the school has a lot of problems, a lot. And, you know, sitting here and saying, you know, we're not going to, we're just going to, you know, put our head in the sand and pretend that this isn't happening. It's not true that a lot of people want to move to this town and think this is a great school district. If you have young kids, I don't have kids. But if you do, you're not going to want to send them to Lacy Township. In fact, you know what I feel we should do? We should disband the school district and we should send them to sending school districts where they'll get a much better education. That's my point of view. Okay. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Everybody else? Ah, Barry. Come on down, Barry. You're the closer, right?
Yeah, I think, I hope anybody else is coming up after me. Barry Bender, South End of Town. I can't say it anymore.
You can't say historic. You just can't say it.
Historic, South End of Town. How's that? All right. Just wanted to comment, I'm starting with Relay for Life. We didn't do as well. And I think the move to August had a big part to do with that. We missed you guys not being there, but we did okay. I think we did pretty close to the first year that we were in Berkeley, somewhere in that vicinity. But we need a lot more people working on this. So if there's people out there in TV land that are interested in keeping Relay for Life going, we need help. That's really, really important. On the topics of the day here today. To me, it appears, because you had two hot topics tonight, okay? You had VetWorks, the historic building, and you got the new town hall. And the only line I can draw to all of this, okay, is the idea that we need to sell all the properties on Lacy Road and Route 9. And to me, in haste to do that, okay, as far as the vets go, there should have been a little more preparation done prior to making the sale, putting the building up even, okay, to make sure that those people were protected. And maybe the historic building was protected. Maybe we could have done something through the planning board and take that little piece of the property and coordinate off and then sell the rest of the property. Just my opinion, okay? As far as the, you know, the, the new town hall to me says, we want something else on this property. That's what it says to me, okay? And to spend the amount of money that we're talking about to do that, the amount of money would bring in from a ratable here, up and down Route 9, you could knock down every freaking building on Route 9 and still not bring in the kind of money. In my opinion, I'm giving you my opinion, that, that we're going to be spending on that and, you know, I, I, I'm dead set against it. So just wanted to share that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Come on down, sir. State your name for record, please.
How you doing? I'm Kevin Lawler. I'm more interested in just getting some information from you guys. What's the total population of town right now?
About 30,000.
Okay. And there's a sale on a piece of property down on Lacy Road and Route 9, correct?
We sold it already.
Oh, you did?
Yes, the sign was.
Was there a liquor license tied to that property?
There was.
Was there a liquor license tied to that property?
However, if a potential restaurant, the owner wanted to bring in a potential restaurant that required a license, there would have been a bidding process to go out to bid for a liquor license. The township has one available from the 2010 census.
Oh, okay.
On-site consumption.
And was that made public record? Did it get posted in the?
There was in the statement on the MLS that for a restaurant, there could be the availability of a potential liquor license.
Okay, because I, I know some people in town that have businesses in town that might be tied to the liquor business and they didn't know anything about it.
What was on the MLS and how we get liquor licenses is based on the census. We did not qualify for any new liquor licenses on the 2020 census. This is one from 2010 and it's a population cap that they use. So for every consumption license, it's 3,500 people. So we still have one leftover from the 2010 census.
So there is a liquor license available though?
If the governing body wishes to sell it, there are parameters and limits as to what they can put on it as to the location in town, the number of seats it requires.
But that does have to be posted and in the newspaper.
It has to go out to official bid.
All right. Forgive my ignorance. I was just wondering. I, I didn't know nothing about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Yes, sir.
It's late. Jim, Lacy, New Jersey.
Okay.
Hi, Jim.
It's, it's, okay, very good, very good, thanks. Just my two minutes and, and two cents. I spent like a decade's working in Manhattan, helping to build skyscrapers. And it was just my suggestion for this is that we would either, new construction takes a long time and it's very expensive. And always at the end, there's always overruns and overbudget and everything else. We had a saying called, we always said, "Chaos creates cash." You know, there's a wall built, there's no pipes in it yet. They have, the wall has to be destroyed, stuff like that. What we used to do was, a lot of times in the trade center buildings and things, we would just scrape a, an office floor that's the size of a city block, scrape it down to the bone, reconfigure it to whatever the customer wanted, right? Or like Barney's Madison Avenue, where I worked on that one, they didn't have the air rights to go any higher than 20 floors above. So they dug down into the basement. They jack, called it Little Lebanon because it was 20 guys with jackhammers every morning, which didn't really help my head every morning, but, but, um, but, you know, this building here has a good footprint. I don't know, I don't know if you, if you have liabilities on going higher because it's only, I think, a three-story building, a four-story building, this building, right?
Two.
Two. I mean, I don't know, I mean, I don't know, I mean, probably would be less construction time too, just to scrape it to the bone, set up some kind of temporary, you know, for the offices and stuff. And then maybe go a little higher and stuff like that because you have a lot of systems in place here already that just need upgrading. And that would be, you know, that's my, like I said, you know, my view from the window. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Yes, sir.
Tactiservio Seabreeze?
Uh, yeah. I keep my boat down at the marina. I've been hearing a lot of stories. What's going on with that marina down there? Is it for sale or?
We are in the process of contemplating listing it for sale. The adjoining property owner has inquired to us about purchasing it from the township.
So that guy, he's going to have a monopoly on the whole river then?
He can, I guess. I think he can.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying. So, uh, so like, it's, it's, it's in the works right now. So you sold the vet building, you sold that. What's next? The lakes?
Well, we need to put one, over $1.2 million of improvements into the bulkhead. And if we do that, we're probably going to have to raise the dock slip fees. And we've already been talking about possibly relooking at this and raising the fees.
Well, I think that would be, I think that would be fair if you raised them. I mean, you know, I know we're getting a good deal. I mean, they are falling apart. When I first moved there, I saw Quinn and he goes, "Oh yeah, we're going to get a, a grant." And your husband, nice guy.
We didn't get the grant.
I know. I'm just saying. So why don't you like put it out there to the people that lived there, you know, been there? I mean, that was one of my draws from coming here.
You need to put it out to the people.
Like, if, you know, like say, hey, you know, if we got to raise it to get the money, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm good with that.
In order to cover the costs, we'd probably have to get about $15,000 a season from each of yous to cover those costs.
$15,000 a season?
Yeah. 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 Well, obviously, we're not going to do that.
So out of, out of, there's 80 boats there, so that's 900,000.
Eighty-two, eighty-two boats.
So at $15,000, let's do the math. That's 900,000 a year for 15, how many years?
I'd have to pay off the note in the bond.
Well, you know, you can't like take a 10-year or a 12-year. I'm just saying.
Well, when you do a bond, when you do a bond note, what happens is is they take the current notes that you have in your new notes and they average the life cycle out. So it's up to the bonding company as to how long you're allowed to bond for something. It's not.
So when he buys this, he'll have, he'll have all the slips debt, basically.
Eighty-two slips, correct?
And now what about like the land next to it, the roads, you know?
Well, the, the, he would get a carve-out of about, if it's him, it could be, you could go and buy them, you know, because it's.
Yeah, I'm going to buy them. 70 years old, I'm going to buy them.
Well, you could. There would be.
I don't make your salary. I'm offensive.
There would be about a 15-foot easement on each side of them to allow for parking and the roads would stay where they are.
So this is like, it's out for bid now or?
No, it's not. We are in the process of working up. I have some survey work to do, to get a survey done, and we are working on some photos.
Will we be notified, like, you know, or is this going to be like, it's just going to happen?
It, it has to be published in the paper and everything. Yes.
All right. That's it.
Thank you for your time. Anybody else?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution for executive session? Resolution 2023-270, resolution in the township of Lacy County of Ocean State, New Jersey,